This evening, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Assistant City Clerk, would you take the role?
Mayor Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Spring.
Here.
Levers. Borghiole.
Here.
And Martinez Beltran. Thank you.
We will also please declare the posting of the agenda.
Yes, tonight's meeting agenda was duly noticed and posted in accordance with Government Code 549-54.2.
Very good. If you'll stand with me, we'll do a silent invocation and then the pledge of allegiance. All right, pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As for public comment, the opportunity for public comment is for items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to make comments on an item that is on the agenda, please wait until we get to that item to offer your comments. Members of the public are entitled to address the City Council concerning any item within the Morgan Hill City Council's subject matter jurisdiction. Public comments are limited to no more than three minutes. Except for certain specific exceptions, the City Council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Public comment is intended for your, for comments. Questions posed during public comment are not generally answered. If you have questions, please send them to the city clerk at ccpubliccomment@morganhill.ca.gov to, in order to receive a response. Do we have anyone wishing to make public comment?
I have no cards and no one on Zoom.
Very good. This is a mid-year, we're doing sort of a mid-year review, a little bit past mid-year, but a mid-year review of our goals. Before we go too much further, I'd also like to recognize the fact that we have some high school students who are with us in the audience. We appreciate you being here. Some of them are here for an hour, some are here for a little longer. So what we're going to do at around six o'clock, as close to that as we can on one side or the other, we'll take a quick break so that they can get their paperwork signed by the Assistant City Clerk and allow them to, to be on their way. So thank you all for being here. We appreciate that. So with that, I am now going to turn the mic over to our City Manager, Christina Turner.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my teammates, the community members, students that are all here this evening. So as the mayor said, this is our mid-year goal check-in. And so we last met in January and March for our goal setting. And so tonight, we're going to spend a little bit of time talking about where we're at. We'll go through some updates. We'll look at our sustainable Morgan Hill. Our next full goal-setting session will be in February of next year. And then we have a couple additional items that we'll cover as well. And so five o'clock start, and just to kind of manage expectations for time this evening, we are anticipating that this evening will go until approximately eight o'clock. So that is our goal for this evening. I have some smiles that I'm seeing, so we'll try to sort of manage around that. Okay, so with that, I, I'd like to usually start off with accomplishments. This time around, we're calling it our department head updates. And then we're going to look at the sustainable Morgan Hill document. You can see it for those that are in the audience over by the pictures. And so that's our council's vision document with our ongoing priorities and strategic priorities. We'll take a look at that. And before we open it up for council discussion and dialogue, we'll look at our work plan. And so our team has come up with a work plan that's really those action items that are in furtherance of council's priorities. And so we'll provide an update on those. And then we have the future council-initiated agenda items. And so those are additional items that the council members have asked us to come back and to assess whether or not other council members, the majority wants to hear those items. And so we'll review that list. We'll talk about our council's norms and ethics policy, the code of conduct, which is continued from a prior meeting. And then we'll end with a very lively discussion from Don Markin on our Rosenberg's Rules of Order. I promise that'll be brief. Okay, so with that, we have our department updates. And I am going to call on each of the department heads. Then as each department head goes, they'll call on the next department. And so each of them oversee multiple areas, but I've asked them to provide just one to three updates. And so that's even if they manage 10 divisions, they're going to provide one to three significant updates, about two minutes each. And so as the council members and community members are hold to timing standards, we're going to ask the same of our teammates. And so Edith, I'm going to ask you to start us off.
Good evening, Council Edith Ramirez, Assistant City Manager for Development Services. Here with my team, I will invite my team to, so they get to share the good work that they're doing. But before I'll get it started with one of the initiatives that we have under the city manager's role outside of development services, but as part of the House, is our work on diversity, equity, and inclusion. On that end, happy to report that we have done good progress with a city employee task force that has been meeting for a good part of the year to put their arms around the survey that all of our teammates filled out. And the idea of the task force is to identify a work program to better improve those areas of improvement that, that the rest of the teammates identified. We expect that work to be completed by end of this calendar year. And at the same time, we are ready to begin our community engagement. As you know, we have been focused inside the House because first and foremost, we want to make sure that we are focused on, on being a good organization. We are now starting to think about what that looks like for our community engagement. So we're putting together a set of listening sessions and focus groups just to listen to the community. Our equity goals are threefold. One, improve the city of Morgan Hill organization. Two, support the Morgan Hill community. And three, enhance cultural awareness and create a sense of belonging. And that concludes my report on DEI, and I'm happy to pass it on to the team. My recommendation that team knows will start with economic development, planning, housing, and we'll end with building.
Wonderful, thank you, Edith. And as Matt is making his way up, just want to point out to everyone, just right up here is great. And then we'll make sure we get you a microphone. Kim's bringing that over. So in your packet, if you're looking for a full, comprehensive listing of our updates, there is an attachment, it's Department Updates, September 2023. And so you'll find a much more exhaustive listing. And with that, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, members of our community. Matt Mayhew, Economic Development Director. I want to give you just a very brief update. I think one of the things that we've been focused a lot in the economic development team is the P-Bid implementation. In 2000, and late 2020, 22, the City Council approved the, the formation of the P-Bid. There was some leftover money from the previous P-Bid, so we, we initiated the formation of the P-Bid Board this year. We will not have new assessments until 2024, the spring of 2024.
Explain just, uh, P-Bid means what for our audience?
Property-based improvement district.
Thank you.
So it's an assessment district on property owners in the downtown-specific district. That assessment begins in 2024 and we'll start receiving money in the spring of 2024. But we had some leftover money from the previous P-Bid, and we're starting to figure out what our priorities and plans are using the management district plan to spend that money. The board just approved their first expenditure this week, and we will be doing some power washing of the sidewalks in the downtown to beautify downtown. So that's our first step. The second thing is downtown activation. If you were in downtown Morgan Hill on Saturday, you saw our most recent activation. Earlier this year, the City Council approved expenditures of $200,000 towards downtown activation. Our second activation occurred this last Saturday with a makers market and the, and a car show. Lot of rave reviews, a lot of good feedback from that event. And then we'll conclude with our third event on October 28th with a trick-or-treat and a kids fair and a movie night. So we'll conclude that. And the last piece is our focus continues to be on developing retail in Morgan Hill. Based on your direction, we will be coming back to the City Council in November with an updated plan for auto, auto dealer zoning. We're going to take another run at bringing back a proposal to the City Council based on your direction. And we're continuing to prepare for the ICSC conference that happens in late October, where myself and Brittany Sherman will be attending, looking for retail opportunities to bring to Morgan Hill to fill some of our vacant spaces. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Matt.
Good afternoon. Jennifer Carmen, Development Services Director. And in planning, we have been focused so far this year on finishing long-range planning items, namely the housing element. We are about to be submitting our third version of the housing element to HCD, and we're feeling really good about where we are in the process with our new reviewer. And we're hoping that things go well over our 60-day review and will be done. The other thing we completed this year is our form-based code. And instituting the form-based code is really a focus on creating that Monterey corridor that our general plan envisioned. Pedestrian-friendly, really focused on the public realm of buildings in the street. And we're looking forward to seeing that go into effect next week. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Sure.
Thank you, Mayor. So the 60-day review, what is different and that you put in, in hopes that it will get accepted?
So our reviewer had asked for more information about affirmatively furthering fair housing, looking at our racially concentrated areas of affluence and how we're going to handle diversifying the housing stock in those areas, looking at quantitative objectives and measurements of achievement as we're moving through new housing programs. And we're working very closely with our housing team on making sure that those are programs that can be implemented and will be successful.
Jennifer, thank you, and thanks for doing all this. I know how hard it's working with HCD.
It's, it's been an adventure.
Yeah.
But one thing that we did learn, that only 49 of the 106 cities in the Bay Area have been certified. So there's an awful lot of us out there that are still working on it. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. I'm sorry, Councilmember Spring. Yeah, it's, yeah.
It's a workshop, so I, I hope it's okay if we're not too formal. It's also the reason I don't wear a tie, since it's a workshop.
Hey, I was dressing up.
I only wear it if I have to. But you know, it really worries me that we're not done yet, and Gilroy is done. So what is your, last week I saw some smiles at, at a conference we were at from city folks. But how confident are you that when you submit it within the next couple of weeks, I hope, that we get the final approval, sign-off, certification, whatever it's called, from, from the state?
Well, I never like to overpromise or, and don't want to hedge our bets, but our reviewer was very positive. We were also told that we would know in 30 days whether or not there's some additional tweaks that are needed in order to meet that 60-day review. And that's very similar to what Gilroy just had happen. So they've been working really closely with them.
So my understanding is Gilroy is done?
Yes. But they had just resubmitted with the last little bit of tweaks that the reviewer was looking for.
So, so in 30 days, they'll give you another feedback, and then it takes another 60 days before we know?
At the 30-day point in this third review, they're going to give us a heads-up on whether or not some minor things need to be fixed in order in that 60 days to get the approval.
Okay, and, and when does, does he know that a stupid builder's remedy tool that, that builders can use right now, when does that stop coming in place?
The day we get our certification.
Okay. And, and there is, did anyone ask them if, if they'd be willing, well, if it's, whatever is, is missing, right, whether that would, that that clock just ends earlier before they certify it?
I would defer to our city attorney.
That's not a, that, that's not a question for HCD, that's a question for a judge. And so we're hoping we don't need a judge to tell us. But that's, that's how, HCD is not going to tell us one way or the other whether our, whether they believe our housing element is substantially compliant.
Well, little, little did I know how, how my worries in January were warranted, right? When I asked, what else can we do to protect our commercial locations that, that are still commercially zoned right now? So that not the state or with a new law or, or builders can grab it because they, they can.
There's other legislation that is not builder's remedy that already allows developers to do that.
Right, but I think that wasn't in place in January yet. So what have we, what, if anything, have we done trying to do whatever we legally can to protect as much as we can? Whether it's industrial or, or commercial zoning? I, I don't know who can answer that one.
I think the only way we protect our job-generating lands is to have jobs being generated on them.
In other words, build on them, right? Yeah. Renee, can you help the audience understand what the builder's remedy is?
Sure.
Briefly, yes, as briefly as you can.
I really should sit. We're going to be here a while. So the builder's remedy is part of the Housing Accountability Act that governs sort of housing law in general. And what it allows is a developer to pursue a housing project on a piece of property irrelevant what the general plan and zoning says. So they can move forward anytime, any day. They still have to go through, thank you. They still have to go through an official permitting process, but it isn't, they don't, it doesn't matter what the zoning is, and it doesn't matter what the general plan designation is.
And so we have how many builder's remedy applications?
It's fluid at the moment, but we have four preliminary applications.
Applying the builder's remedy?
Yes.
Yes.
But we believe one may switch to a different law.
And one is on industrial land or commercial land?
One's on industrial. One is on commercial-industrial.
And we would normally have slated for job generating
Yes.
is now being taken because of builder's remedy.
Yes.
Because of the state of California.
Correct.
And that land is being taken and being used for housing.
But the applications do need to go through the process. They are subject to CEQA.
No, we get all of that. They have to, they still have to abide by those, our, our criteria, but still they can come in and take land that we would normally want to use to build commercial development and create jobs.
Correct.
Now will be housing.
I would just add that, that we, you know, it's not a, it's not a black and white whether the builder's remedy is applicable. One of the projects is being proposed for commercial land. It is, but even if they're not able to use the builder's remedy, they can use one of the other tools in order to build on commercial land.
Okay.
So, so even if we're successful in getting a court to agree that we're in substantial compliance with the housing element law, they will still be able to develop.
So there's other state laws that, that they can apply?
That commercial site. It's, but it's both, it's a commercially, commercial industrial zone property that's also on a commercial corridor. So there's SB 6 or AB 21.
Our team is working on a summary of the different applications. And like Jennifer said, it is fluid and it will change, but we will get that out to the council as well as to the community. So if we can hold off just a bit more, we'll get that out, and then we can certainly answer any questions.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you. Councilmember Spring, were you, were you good?
Yeah, and you can call me Renee tonight.
Okay, Renee, very good. We'll go first name since it's more casual.
May I follow up on what I?
Let's do one more. Any questions over here?
Yes.
Okay, let's do one more here, and then we'll come over here.
Okay.
Since Jennifer's sitting down, I'm sorry. Well, we'll try to make it quick. Now you're comfortable. Take your time. Please.
Oh, thank you. So what I thought I heard you say is that if the HCD does get accepted, it will not, it, it will give us the ability to not enforce builder's remedy on certain properties? Am I hearing that correctly?
That is correct, however, if someone applies before that certification happens, through SB 330, they have locked, sort of the current situation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jennifer.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Jennifer, that, thank, sorry, thank you. That happens whether or not they've, whether or not we've, we're in this extension period, right? They're still able to hold, they still can lock in before the actual approval within succeeding?
Yes, that's, that's.
Okay. We're talking, you said three or four projects. Can you just tell us what three or four projects those are?
Okay, we have to, we do want to move quickly. Can you, can we talk about those projects later and maybe move on to what your next question might be?
I think, I think.
Can we list the projects?
I think what we'll do is we'll put out a, a summary because it's hard to describe.
Yeah.
We don't have addresses, it's locations, so it's hard to describe. But we'll put out, as the city manager said, we'll put out a summary that identifies those, those locations with a map.
Okay, now I'm going to have more questions, but okay.
Not many more.
Not today, but I'll have many more questions. Okay, so I wanted to ask also, though, so the 60 days were pretty, I mean, I'm, I have in my head now December 1st that we're thinking this may happen.
That, that is the goal.
That is the goal. Okay.
And, but we will know by November 1st, around November 1st, whether or not that will happen.
Right.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate it.
I have some questions for Matt, but I can, I'm happy to wait until the end if you'd like.
Do you mind if we could wait till, that would be great. Thank you, Yvonne.
I keep trying to sneak up here and then I sit down. Good evening, Council Rebecca Garcia, Housing Director. The housing team continues to oversee the below-market-rate ownership and rental program. Just recently, we had 380 applicants enter a drawing for two below-market-rate homes. That sold for $599,000, three bedrooms. We continue to proactively respond to our homeless residents through our unhoused specialist, Brian Melictum, who is essentially conducting social work for individuals at risk of homelessness and those who are literally homeless. Most recently, supervisor at NS awarded, and Board of Supervisors awarded $150,000 to be used for rental and deposit assistance to St. Vincent de Paul's, so we're working very closely with them. Brian just housed somebody who's been homeless in Morgan Hill for over 20 years. In terms of our communications and engagement efforts, we've either attended or hosted 26 events in the last month to connect with the community on housing with a greater emphasis on Spanish-speaking. We've updated our city housing website. We now have a housing newsletter, thanks to Ms. Christie Thomas. And thanks to Ms. Edith, we now have a grant from ICMA where we are focused on developing strategies to connect our, to connect our Spanish-speaking community to both jobs and housing. So that is an effort from economic development, housing, and our communications team. I will stop there.
Thank you. Marilyn?
Yes, this is sort of for you and the Chief of Police. I understand that Santa Clara County has gone ahead and approved that we share a mental health expert with Gilroy. And so has that come through yet?
I have an update when we talk about the police department. But to answer your question, yes, it has come through, but there's better news than what you've just, the information you've been given.
But I know it, it'll help Rebecca, and that's why I asked.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Hold on, hold on.
Okay, again, what we're going to do is, we're going to limit it to, we have questions, I get it.
Well, I thought it was a workshop where it should be more casual.
Yeah, yeah, we can. I think we want to try to stick as closely to the goal of the timeline.
Just do a speed workshop with no questions?
We can ask questions, but, but if we could, move through them quickly.
No, we're not. This is important about the process.
Then, then please do ask the question.
If we don't have time for questions, then what's the purpose of the workshop?
Please ask your question.
The, the, so Rebecca, the, I, I know the state, I think, again, gave out more money on state level to, to help the homeless situation across the board. That it, that it's getting worse and worse in some cities, not so much here yet, thankfully. But the, are, are we being able to tap into any sources from the state anyhow? Or are we at the mercy of the county?
The majority of the funding from the state is really to create homeless shelters, to create permanent supportive housing. So nonprofit housing developers access that money on our behalf to create affordable apartment communities. But unless we were ready to open a homeless shelter, that's what a lot of that money is geared towards, so it typically goes to larger cities. And we're also not an entitlement city yet. Once we hit the 50,000 population threshold, it'll be easier for us to access funds.
I, I know that some cities also got some funding to, for cleanup. The, the, is that something we looked into, how, how to get that kind of funding and help?
It's usually not funding for only cleanup. There is always a shelter bed. So it's like, yeah, you can clean up, but you're also going to create a homeless shelter. So until we're ready to do that type of activity, there's no money to just, just clean up.
You're looking like you're, it's like, no. Okay, thank you. I really appreciate what you're doing for.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Thank you.
Yvonne?
Shame for you to say two people out of 300 and what, 80 applicants?
Okay. It doesn't mean they're all eligible, but that's how many, they're, they're made in the hat.
But they're seeking housing.
Oh, yeah.
Affordable housing. Okay. And then I'm wondering with this, what, how, how far are we from that entitlement city of 50,000?
Ooh, Jennifer, help me out. We're at.
Because we're close.
We're 45,000 residents right now, so.
What do we estimate that would be?
Ten more years.
Population went backwards for the last two years. So we were up higher, and we've gone backwards. So it's going to be interesting to figure that out.
Microphone.
I just, I mean, we have, I just had somebody talking to me about the development on Monterey, and we've got some pretty significant developments. I'm assuming that we're going to get, we're going to get there soon. Is that not the consensus of?
What Krista just mentioned is that our population went down on the last count. And so we don't anticipate going above that 50,000 for quite a while.
If there's 1,000 units in the pipeline and being built, that.
2,000.
Yeah, so you, you can do math on your own. It's going to be a couple of years.
Chris, are you able to use the microphone?
Yeah, it's not, I'm sorry, not loud enough. I mean, I mean, we've talked about the numbers in the pipeline and potential, but that, you know, we need 5,000 more people. So that's at least a couple of years. Just by my simple math.
Okay. Any other questions, Rebecca? What, I, I guess I'm just wondering, is there anything we can do to prepare for that? I'm, I'm assuming it's going to be more than a couple of years. If we've got 2,900 units in the pipeline, which is almost 3,000, I don't know how long that's going to take. If it, does it take three years to build housing? I don't know.
So one thing is we're really mindful of the Community Development Block grant funds, which we can be eligible for once we hit the 50,000 population. So Chris and I have actually met with them.
Great.
Right now, we're locked in with the county for three years because you can only join that consortium every three years. So definitely by the next time it's up, or prior to that, we would consider what we would do from there.
That's what I'm, so we're ready. You're doing everything so that right when we're, okay, thank you.
And just, until we get to that point, we're using the county-wide dollars, right? We're continuing to apply for and use the county-wide dollars that we can get through, through, through that.
Thanks, Yvonne. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and teammates. I'm Eric Blinkwitz, the Building Official. I'm here to report for the Building Division and Code Compliance Division. So far this calendar year, we've issued 1,849 permits. That is an increase of 8% for the same period last year. We have performed 7,429 inspections, an increase of 23% from the same time last year. Along with our normal day-to-day activities, we're working on a post-entitlement phase project checklist to comply with Assembly Bill 2234, which is due by the end of the year. We received a $40,000 grant to be used for implementing an automated online photovoltaic permitting platform to comply with Senate Bill 379. We have completed the registration process with SolarApp, and we are scheduled to launch the residential pilot program by the end of this year. We are also working on creating an online permitting process for minor permits such as residential re-roofs and water heater permits, which we're hoping to also have launched by the end of this year. For the Code Compliance Division, we have, so far this calendar year, we have opened 494 code-compliance cases, which is an increase of 41% from the same time, same period last year. We currently have 205 active cases, and we are currently working with HR to fill the vacant second code-compliance officer position that will help decrease the number of the open cases.
Very good, thank you. Questions? Yvonne?
What is the majority of the permits that you're processing of the 1,849?
Um, so they are mainly miscellaneous permits, which would go from re-roofs to water heater furnaces. We don't have, I don't have the number in front of me exactly where all.
That's fine. Thank you.
The, uh, go ahead, before you leave. So that, that's a very high number of inspections, right? How, how many employees are, are working on those?
So we currently have two full-time building inspectors. I'm also out in the field part of the day, and then we have one employee who is, does fire inspections and fire plan reviews. Is also the building inspector supervisor, so there's.
So is every one of those inspection, inspections a separate visit, or do you go out there and then you do 10 at a time?
So we do based on inspections, not stops. So for example, today we had 22 total stops, which came out to about 40 inspections.
And how much time to, does one inspection take, average?
It depends on the type of inspection. Like a water heater inspection could take 20 minutes, or a rough frame could take up to an hour.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Chris Gionni with your Public Services Team. My update, we're making stuff happen in 2023. Lot of, of stuff that's been on the books for a long time, so talk about old stuff and new stuff. Old stuff, Hale Avenue, been on the books forever. We hope to have the first part of the extension completed in partnership with Valley Water, maybe by the end of the year, if not early next year, depending on what rain does. New signal at Main and Hale, and people will be driving through there hopefully pretty quick, within months now. We're working with Valley Water to finish their, finishing their construction of Phase 2A, and we are finishing our review and coordination on designs of Phase 2B, which they hope to bid before the end of the year, so that we can finish flood control in Morgan Hill, which has been on the books, I don't know, 70 years or so, something like that. Third fire station, they're mobilized, we had the groundbreaking, we made that happen, also been on the books for a decade, so building that's exciting. And the last one, also been on the books for a while, our second trunk line to Gilroy design is completed. We're finishing the final easements, and we hope to get that out to bid, um, next year and start construction next year. So lots of big projects. So that's the old stuff. Let's talk about the new stuff, pickleball courts. We hope to bring a, a contract to the council at your next meeting. We finished the design and bidding of that to build our first pickleball courts, outdoor pickleball courts in community parks, so excited about that. Jumping over to our maintenance group, we have, um, we did a soft launch of our See Click Fix app in July. We are now fully advertising it to the public. Since July, we have taken on, through See Click Fix, and taken down 140 things of graffiti that have been put up through the city, and taken on 360-plus tickets from the public out from the soft launch. So we're gonna see how many we can get from putting it out there now. So you should see that in the 411 and social media going all the time, so encourage you to let residents know they can report any infrastructure maintenance needs that are city-related through See Click Fix. And jumping over to our recreation group, we finished another season at the Morgan Hill Aquatic Center this summer, and continued to regrow our membership from COVID. We have over 4,000 membership units, COC Aquatic Center memberships. That's over 80% of where we were before COVID, which has been really good for us. So it's a long road, still going, but that's super exciting. And then the, um, uh, fun thing of the night, you may have seen it, it's been in social media. We just put it out yesterday, the recreation group is doing a Haunt Your Home contest, so people can sign up for that online, and that's to bring the nice Halloween spirit to our community. And last but not least, we're excited, we are joining the, the Police Department and the Code Enforcement Group and the Building Division, because we have written our first water, formal water waste tickets in the last month. We've issued two citations for water waste. We've had a soft hand trying to get water waste compliance for a really long time, but working now, we have issued two citations, and we'll continue to do that going forward with people who don't follow the requirements. That's all I got.
Chris.
Question?
Marilyn.
Can you hear me? Uh, what is a citation? Do they get a fine, or?
Yeah.
And what if they still don't adhere to that? What happens?
Then they get a bigger fine.
Thank you.
Chris, with that, is there a, a fee schedule that has been published that people would know what, what that looks like? If someone gets a series of fines?
Yes. Yeah, and they're, and it's not just a schedule, there's said letters, probably six letters before they get that.
Got it.
As well as reached out and contacted individually.
Right, okay, very good. Yvonne.
Chris, how are we knowing that they, these people need to be cited?
We use a combination of technology and observation, so we can see if they have, through our AMI software, our utility software, if they have water running 24/7, they have a leak that they're not fixing, or they're watering their irrigation five days a week, we can see it, and then we go out, make an observation, and then can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Renee. And not so much a question, but I am really impressed by everything your department is doing as well. The, uh, the biggest thank you is really for the, the traffic light you, you put in after I begged and pushed and asked for years on behalf of residents, uh, the left turn from Monterey to Spring, right? And, and that really removed a safety hazard in that area, so thank you for doing that. The, uh, also, I, I encourage everyone who's listening in, uh, the great project that the city has been doing with Valley Water, Chris hinted at it, around Lake Silvera, with, it's part of the flood protection program, but includes actually restoration of, of a nice area around Lake Silvera, and, and basically giving that area back to Mother Nature eventually. It's not as accessible yet as, as I'd love it to be, but at least there's new trails. You can walk down there from Watsonville, there's even a new crossing, and then you, you can walk on, on either side of, of the canal down to that area. So that's brand new, and, and it's an exciting project. It's amazing the wildlife is coming back the second we let Mother Nature do what it's intended to do, so thank you for, for doing that. The, at, at one point, I don't know when we'll get the next update, you know, what are the next roads you're gonna tack, call to fix, uh, but, you know, I'm gonna come back with the same, the same ones that really need help.
Chris, we're gonna actually, we're not gonna have that conversation right now? I think that's more of a comment than it was a question.
No, it was a question.
No, we're not gonna, we'll address that at another time, as far as the roads that they're gonna be.
I think it's a fair question, it's part of his department.
We're coming in one of your next two meetings on pavement conditions, and then the update on which roads we're doing usually happens in the spring.
All right.
For, with a five-year plan.
Thank you, Chris. Gina. Yeah, I thought you had a question, no? Okay, very good, thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Okay, Mr. Horta, HR. And then followed by Datwin, Finance.
Good evening, Council, Michael Wadeth, Human Resources Director. Um, the Human Resources Department is actively working with all our departments to fill any vacant positions that we have in recruitment. We also are doing initiatives to, for employee appreciation, recognition. We have our service awards coming up in the next couple of months for recognizing those teammates for their year of service. We also are currently in our open enrollment period right now, where our teammates can make their changes for medical benefits and all of that good stuff, and also partnering with the City Attorney's Office in negotiations. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
After that, we'll have Chief Huang.
I just wanted to ask you about opening enrollment.
Yes.
Um, so for my benefits, just kidding. I wanted to see, I know that there was a major change with some of our health providers, and I just wanted to ask, has, has that been talked about with employees, if they're looking to change, or?
Yes, so, um, we send out information to our employees about all the plans that are coming up, including all the material that comes from the individual plans, so like CalPERS is our provider for, or broker, I should say, in the sense for our medical plans. And then each teammate should have received a summary from their, um, medical plans in the mail, or a mailer from CalPERS to let them know rates have increased, or any of that information, but we also are sharing that information with them, or meeting with them individually.
In particular, I guess I'm interested, there's a big, a bulk of employees that use a certain provider, and I just wanna make sure that we have done outreach to those employees.
Yes, so we have shared that information with them.
Great, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Michael. Dat.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council members, Datwin, Finance Director. Since last year, a bulk of finance team had been working diligently, tried to implement a new EIP system, Enterprise Resource Planning System, uh, to a new system called Talimunis. The existing system, we have been using for 15 years, so you can say that it's a, it's a multi-use project, which council approved back in late in 2021. So far through, uh, just recently of July this year, we completed the financial part of the system. So we're currently working on the, uh, utility building, and hopefully early next year, we can start being, implementing the payroll and, uh, human resource module. Also working with the Public Service Team on the wastewater rate study. We just engaged in a consultant a few months ago, so we hope to bring the council earlier, early next year in 2024. Thank you.
Thank you, Dat. We'll have Chief Huang next, while he's making its, his way up here. Michelle Bigelow is not here this evening. She is instructing at the Master Municipal Clerks Academy, and so she asked me to share some updates for her area. So the first is on website refresh and update. She is working with our teammates, her and her team are working with our teammates to update our website, to make the look and feel, and just easier to navigate. We're organizing the website to be more user-centric. In addition to that, we've implemented a monthly Spanish email newsletter, and then supporting multiple departments with our communications outreach and marketing campaigns. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, Leadership Team, and members of the public, George Huang, Cal Fire, and your Morgan Hill Fire Department Fire Chief. As always, updates from Morgan Hill, this year's been great. We've, um, you know, groundbreaking for the third station, working with the, the city, it's just been phenomenal. We've been waiting for a long time, and the support and the attendance there was just absolutely humbling to see everyone there. It was a great turnout, and I hope that you saw lots of social media posts, and the city's, it's a great addition to the city. Currently, we have a fire engine that's being, um, built right now in South Dakota, so we have Battalion Chief Juan Navarro, as well as our Fleet Manager. They're gonna take a trip in the next month or so back to South Dakota to take a look and start the buildup process. It's roughly about 16 to 18 months to build out, but once we get that process moving a little bit faster, hopefully, we will, hopefully, I will be present for the, in the 18 months when we actually push the engine in on the traditional fire department tradition, very similar to back in the days when we had horse carriages pulling out the, the actual fire apparatus. So when that time comes, I hope there will be a big celebration and attendance, so we can all push a very heavy fire truck back into the engine bay. And our last addition is working with the city, we are installing mobile data computer ABL from Radio Mobile and all of our apparatuses, which will track our resources on actual calls and where they're at. So when there is an actual dispatch, everything is, is accurately tracked through our command center. Previously, we have never had that before, so with this addition, without our resources going on the radio and saying, I'm currently at Walnut and Dunn, well, they don't have to say that anymore. They just, we just look at the response from the computer, and we will send the response accurately and, and the fastest resource appropriately for the city. So that's a great addition to the city. That is all I have on this, there are questions.
We'd like to say congratulations to the chief, he's recently received a promotion overseeing, I think, what, how many counties?
Uh, northern regions, so six different Cal Fire units.
We will miss you here, you still live here, and we'll be glad to see you around the community, but congratulations, well-deserved promotion for you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you for all your service to our community.
Thank you.
Anything further from the leadership team? Okay, great. Edith? No? Okay, wonderful.
And real quickly, I just wanna make sure people understand, so we're gonna do, we're gonna have some public comment period tonight. We're gonna do that, first public comment will be after item four, the next public comment will be after item six, and then again after item seven, so if you have public comments, we'll, we'll certainly get to them.
Up on the screen right now is some of the accomplishments. So you can see in the bottom right-hand corner, the fire station groundbreaking, our, out, out, the downtown street activations, looks like National Night Out in the left corner, and then the Hale Avenue roundabout. All right, so Sustainable Morgan Hill, let's go ahead and jump in. Okay, so, as I mentioned earlier at the beginning of the meeting, over there, we have our Sustainable Morgan Hill document. This document was established in January of 2022, and basically is council's document for 2022 and 2023. We, do we visit it twice a year? And so we're almost at the completion of 2023. And so this document has our vision, our ongoing priorities, our strategic priorities, and our Choose Morgan Hill statement. We're gonna circle back to this document after we go through our work plan, as, as well as our follow-up items. Um, the, the couple pages after here that I have in the slides are definitions for the strategic priorities, and so there's five of them, fiscal sustainability, affordable housing and homelessness, community outreach, engagement and messaging, and economic development, and then the last one is transportation. And so these definitions were created from the goal-setting sessions, and in some of them, you'll see some specific work plan items. Now what we're gonna go do is look at the strategic priorities work plan. So as, as I had mentioned, our team, a few years ago, after the council established its strategic priorities, we developed the work plan items, and so those are included in the agenda package as a attachment, and so it's basically the third attachment, Strategic Work Plan Fiscal Year 23 and 24 revised September 2023. So we'll just spend a little bit of time, if you wanna pull those up in your agenda package. So basically, they're organized by departmental area, and then by goal, and then you can see there's columns, same setup as before, where we identify which strategic priority the action item is in furtherance of. And then we do have a COVID column, and that's something that we started during COVID, and I have a note on the document that we will remove that COVID column, starting when we provide a work plan for next year. Yes, could we get that on the, on the slide, the strategic priorities, please? Tim, are you able to pull it up? So it's the third attachment to the agenda. Um, and then while she's pulling that up, so consistent with before, we have a status column. Many of them are ongoing, but we do have some that do have dates, and so it might say in process, and some say completed. And then if they do have a, a date, then we do note the percentage completed for in-process activities, and then the estimated complete by date. Um, and so you can see, and you'll see up on the screen in a moment, they're arranged by areas. You have City Manager, Communications and Engagement, City Attorney, Human Resources, Council Services and Record Management, and so forth. Um, and so what we'll do now is just to have, can pull it up on the screen, and then to see if council has any questions on any of the specific activity goals or work plan items.
While she's pulling it up, it was in your packet, if you had a chance to look at that, are there any questions or comments council has on those items?
And, and while that's going on, um, someone reached out, Chief, your updates. You didn't shout and jump up and say, my turn, my turn, so we'll do that, and then Dawn, if you have anything to share.
I was saving time. I'm really excited to, uh, share the Flock accomplishments over the past two years. August 2021 is when City Council approved the Flock cameras for the Police Department to purchase and install, lease program. Over the past two years, we've made 222 arrests. That's probably 250 arrests, more than we would have otherwise made without those cameras. And of those arrests, we've charged 746 offenses, which means people coming into our town and stealing cars have a car full of other crimes that they were charged with, stolen property, shaved keys, warrants, burglary tools, et cetera. During this time, we've also seen that burglaries, both residential and commercial combined, are down 42% from 2020. The thefts overall are down 19% from 2020, and thefts of motor vehicle parts, i.e., catalytic converters, are down 66%. converters, are down 66% from 2020. So when bad people come into town driving stolen cars, they're often looking for other crimes to commit or things to steal. And so with us responding and the officers proactive response is really impacting the community in a positive way. Next is the PERC program. We had a good psychiatric emergency response team. The county had a grant, and they funded us a clinician. She was assigned to a detective that was specialized in crisis intervention training, and together they responded to and contacted 179 people, 195 follow-ups, and 82 active calls for service. Unfortunately, the grant went away, and we thought that the position was also going to go away, which it did. It went to Santa Clara Police Department, who ended up funding the position. But the county just recently notified us that they, due to the amount of cities that were able to fund clinicians, that the county had funds to provide two full-time clinicians to the South County. So that means, instead of sharing one with G O A, we now have our full, our own full-time clinician that will be assigned to a trained patrol officer to respond out to calls for service. So that's really great news, and that person could be with us before the end of the year, depending on who's interested in that position and how fast everything moves along. The third thing I wanted to share was our Morgan Hill Police Department's 30 by 30 initiative. It's an initiative that advances women in policing. Recognizing the under-representation of women in policing has us focusing on actions that we can take to advance women in law enforcement. Some of those things include understanding the current state of the department with regards to gender equity, understanding factors that may be driving disparities, developing and implementing strategies and solutions to advance women in policing, take measures to increase the representation of women in all ranks of law enforcement, ensure that policies and procedures are free of bias, promote equitable hiring, retention, and promotion of women officers, and ensure culture is inclusive, respectful, and supportive of women in all ranks and roles of law enforcement. I also want to give a quick plug to our Faith in Blue, which is when the police department partners with our faith-based organizations during October 7th. It's a national event, and this year, on Saturday, October 7th, at 8:30 to 10:30, we have organized a bike ride, and people are free to join us at the police department, and it'll go onto our new trails and be a nice outing together. Would you like me to put on my IT hat or pause for now?
Do you have one IT update for us, and then we'll see if there's any questions, and we'll turn it over to Dawn.
I have three, but the most important is the data center refresh. It was a result of a comprehensive network discovery, so we've cleaned up and got rid of old or unsupported equipment, failed equipment, that was causing outages or disruptions. We have all new data center equipment and installed a UPS strategy that keeps our data center up and running during power outages, and it had its first taste of success when a truck struck a utility pole, causing a power outage and internet outage. Due to the new design data center with resiliency and redundant connections, the network was never disrupted. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. There are no, yep, Renee, go ahead.
Thank you, chief. The, how many women do we have in, in, in your highest ranks, in, in your staff?
One, police corporal.
Did, did you see any, any chances that there will be more, and by when?
Yes, we are engaging in active succession planning with the women in our department now for promotions, and we've just promoted a female officer to the detective bureau, which is the first step for them to gain more experience, to then promote to supervisor.
Because the program you, you mentioned earlier, I think it is a great program and an important one, but of course, anyone wants themselves being reflected in the upper levels too, right? And if that's not happening, then it's a little bit hard to, to believe what is being said, right? So it's like, you have to walk the talk eventually, and I, I hope we'll, we'll see more women in our upper ranks soon across the board, but also in the police department. I know it's a challenge there. With regards to IT, you know, that's, that's very near and dear to my heart. First, I see a lot of improvements the, over the past couple of years, and thank you for that. But my biggest worry still is, is, without going into details what you're doing, how safe is our data from being hacked from the outside? You know, if, if that happens, it gets costly quickly, as, as we all know. But what is, what is your feeling and knowing where we stand?
I feel very comfortable and confident at this point in time, which wasn't always the case. At a point in time, kept me up, but I do believe that would be a, a great conversation for you to have with our new IT director offline, and she can explain a little bit more on the cybersecurity improvements that we've made.
Is, is that being, occasionally being audited by an independent?
Yeah. Our new IT team has connected with federal agencies and with our insurance carrier, and we get regular audits, independent, that are truthful, accurate, and helpful.
And, and are those confidential, or are those reports that could be shared with us council members? Audit reports?
I defer to the city attorney.
So the, the, the testing is done by our, by our insurance, in conjunction with our cyber insurance carrier as a vulnerability testing, and we don't share that with anybody? Because that's what's exposing our vulnerabilities, so making that public would be something of a disaster.
There's usually a management summary for every audit report. Could you share that one?
We can, we can share the high-level reports with, with council.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, chief.
Yeah. Thank you, chief. So we'll go to Dawn, and then after Dawn, we're going to take a brief break for the high school students have been here for now, that they can go ahead and get signed off and be on their way.
And I'll, I'll be very brief, because as council knows, my primary responsibility is supporting all of you and my teammates and their good work. A couple of things to add, though. We recently have, or as of tomorrow morning, we will have completed our mandatory training on preventing harassment, discrimination, and retaliation in employment. This is a relatively new requirement. We've always done that training for our, our supervisors. Within the last four years, we're now required to give the training to all of our employees, as well as all of our elected officials, which includes all of you, and I think all but five of our teammates, or five of the mandatory attendees have attended. We also are required to do it for our planning commission. We haven't done our planning commission yet, so we will schedule a planning commission meeting to do that, and we're hoping that the five remaining outstanding people who need to complete that training will have that done at that time. And then we're not ready to report out on our labor negotiations, but I can report generally good news that we are very close to tentative agreement on all fronts with two of our bargaining units, and we're making really good progress with the third of our represented bargaining units. So we anticipate having all of our contracts renewed well in advance of the December 31st deadline.
Very good. Thank you, Dawn. Go ahead, Yvonne.
Sorry. I actually have some questions for chief. I was just, so. I wanted to ask, number one, the full-time clinician, would this possibly be the same person that we had prior?
I don't believe so. I think she's already set up with Santa Clara Police Department and working.
Okay. Number two, the 30 by 30 initiative, love that. Is that something that's happening now, going to be happening?
We've recently taken, incorporated that into our work plan, and it's been underway for a month.
Okay, so it's launched and happening?
Yes.
And what is the goal of that? Is there some type of metric goal to see an increase in the department by X percent, or what is the goal?
Yes, our support services manager, Sarah Tada, is leading the initiative. She's already started to identify some of the equitable issues in the department. Policing has been a predominantly male profession, and understanding that women have different needs, she's making accommodations for some of those needs. For example, mothers that are returning to the police department that have recently had a child needing a place, a, a comfortable place to tend to their child is, developing a room, yes, for them to...
For nursing, et cetera.
To use, yes.
Talking to Blash, chief.
I'm sorry?
Great. And when do, I mean, is there a target date when, it sounds like you're still going through some revisions for that? Is there a target date when we're going to have that, where Ms. Tada would have her findings?
It's a philosophy, but yeah, we are going to be tracking the measurable things that we've changed in the police department to make the appropriate accommodations. It could be anything from uniforms, to locker room issues, to our gym equipment, yes.
I understand. If I may, I would love to see some type of a target for this program, that we would like to see an increase of staff by such and such percentage, or, you know, something that we could actually look at and measure. That would be great as well. The accommodations, but I would...
Sure.
It would be great to have something that we could see those metrics and what has been done.
Understood. I'd be happy to report back with those.
And hopefully, that will mean an increase in the staffing.
Yes, I'd like to point out that our hiring team has done a great job of hiring female officers, and at one point in time, I believe that we've had the most female officers hired in the history of the department, unfortunately, due to a variety of, of different things. Those female officers have left, whether it would be a promotion to an investigative unit, alcohol, ABC, or the district attorney's office, or finding a new profession, having a child and not wanting to come back to work. So it's been challenging, but we will continue to make that a priority and, and part of our culture.
That's great, and that's a fair point, chief. I would, that I would suggest perhaps including that in the report from the baseline, because I know that prior to this initiative, you've also, I've asked before about this, and you've shared that with me, so thank you.
Very good. We're going to go ahead and take a five-minute break and let the paperwork be signed, and we'll be back five minutes, so at 10 after, we'll be starting again. You know, we're going to do, we're going to do a little bit of a different approach here. We had talked about doing the public comment after item four, but I know that we actually... Oh, yeah, I need to do a little stand-up comedy here. But I know since we bribed some of the high schoolers with a sandwich, they wanted to participate in public comment, and so we are going to, yeah, these guys are like, "Oh, you son of a gun, you got us." So we're going to open public comment. Anybody who wants to come up then? They'll be at the desk here. I see the microphone here. I'm assuming this is because of Facebook. We had some problems, we had some problems with the microphone, so I think they're putting a mic there to help pick up... Pick up the sound. So we'll have you guys, we'll have you guys fill out some public comment cards, and, and Edith had talked to you about some, some comments, so we'll get you guys up. Is there, in the meantime, is there anyone else who has any, any comments?
And if you need a little bit of a discussion prompt, perhaps you can just briefly share what AP government is all about and what some of the things you're learning about are.
You only have three minutes, and so it won't, you know, it's, it's not going to be too hard. You don't have to take all three minutes, but do we have anybody else? Kim, that might be, okay. So... Yeah, let's go. Be sure to let us know your name, and then, yes. You can turn the mic around, facing you there.
Hello, I'm Sean, Sean Fry. I go Live Oak. I'm a senior. Question that she asked me was, what are the things I like about Morgan Hill? I really like our downtown. It's really cool, nice. I like all the, the food that's available. I like to go out with my family and eat. It's really good. And improvements, hmm, I'm not, I'm not sure. I really like our city. I think it's really cool. It's like, it's not too crowded like San Jose, and it's like, not too urban like Hollister, but, you know, it's like, it's really nice. I like it. I like living here, so, yeah.
Council, any questions for Sean? No, I'm kidding. Sean, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
That it?
Yep. Thank you. Thank you. That's wonderful. Yes. I, I'm okay if the student is okay with that. So we're going to ask if, again, we want to, we want to try to move along. We don't want to be too, too long here, so I don't want to end up with all of us grilling a student with a series of questions.
Just a, a quick question. I, I was just curious about what he said. So you, we could do it anytime.
Okay. Go ahead and introduce yourself and give us your thoughts.
I'm Brandon Bogansky. I'm a senior at Live Oak. One thing I would like to say is, this town is a tight community. I really like this town. You know, you go to San Jose, you meet a lot of new people, but this town, like, ups and downs, you stick to, everyone knows each other. Like, I, I can't go anywhere without knowing, like, everybody. Like, for example, Mr. Gianni, I've known him forever.
Yeah, he's pretty old.
Same with Mrs. Holman, it's like, but I don't really have a lot of comments for improvement. I think this town's doing pretty good. I mean, one thing that I disagree with is probably the building of new homes. Like, I've lived here my whole life, so like, I like how it's all, like, all valley and everything, but other than that, I, I love this town, and I think everything's good about it.
I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Lucas Markeskey. I'm a senior at Live Oak High School. And some improvements, similar to Brandon, who just spoke. I appreciate, like, the small-town values of the town, and like, I don't, I don't like the building of a bunch of big warehouses. I'd rather, I'd rather it just be homes than warehouses. I, I don't know how much control you guys have over that, but that's what I appreciate. And then I like, I like our downtown, too.
Very good.
That's all.
Well, thank you for your comments. We appreciate it. Thank you all for being here, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, were there any other students? Did you guys get a sandwich? If not, you're not compelled to come up and speak. If you have something you want to say, you're welcome to come on up. If not, totally get it. You're going to pass? Which one of you is going to be the brave one? All right, here he goes.
Um, hello, my name's Ivan Rybanko. I just, I like to say that I, I appreciate everything that you guys do here, you know, all the work you guys put in, and all that you do for the community, and stuff like that. That's pretty much all I had to say, but I have a question, like, are the, the sandwiches over there free?
You came up and spoke. Yes, you can have, you guys can all have a sandwich there.
Great, thank you very much.
Grab one for the guy in the black shirt there, too, for Joe Baranowski. Get him one. You guys are going for it, man. Thank you, you guys. We appreciate it. Thanks for coming up and saying a few words.
Mayor, can I do what I asked before?
Let's, but let's please keep this part of it very, very brief.
It, it is brief, and I, I want to really thank the students. You've, you've given us some great insight. We don't normally get that, so thank you, Mayor, for allowing them to speak. So one quick question, and you can answer it real quick, even from your seat. Do you feel safe at Live Oak or any school in Morgan Hill?
Yeah, yeah, I feel pretty safe.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
May I, I noticed we have a young lady in the back. I just wondered, we, I didn't see her earlier.
I didn't see it. Would she like to come up and say a few words? It's okay. There we go. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. We appreciate it. And we are going to, we're going to take a break probably around 7:00, 7:15, because that'll be when you guys, unless you guys already have your paperwork signed? Okay, so when you guys are ready, you're good to go. Thank you so much. Very good. We are going to then, Christina, where are we? Where we're going to, oh, we have a comment on Zoom, I believe.
Yes, we have Armando Benavides. Go ahead, Armando.
Is he there? He's muted?
Muted.
Armando, are you there? You can go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So I wanted to talk about the builder remedy regarding the fact that we did not get the certification for the housing element on time. And now the city might be exposed to making concession, being forced to accept some development that maybe we would not be able to, we would have some control over in terms of some, not being under the builder remedy. And I was thinking that maybe what we could do to mitigate those developers taking advantage of the vulnerability that we're in, because we did not get the certification, would be that if we are going to provide any funding, if the city is going to provide any funding to any of those developers, that we can, we should use that as a leverage to ensure that the city, that the city's interests are protected until we get the certification in place. So I think that if we have any funding available, if we are going to provide any support for any developer that comes in and wants to take advantage of the vulnerable situation that we're in, because we need, did not get the certification on time, that we, that the city, you and city council, use any leverage that you may have with the funding, resources, or support that we provide to ensure that there's some mitigation there. That's all I wanted to make. And I agree with the students. Thank you for your service. It is hard, I know. I read the 400 pages of the Agenda Minutes today, and I know it's a lot of time and energy that goes into it, so thank you for your service. But I am very concerned about the fact that we're very invulnerable, because we did not get the certification, and hopefully we could do some mitigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Armando. Appreciate the kind words. Do we at some point want to address that? His concern about, I don't know that there's funding that the city can put forward to these builders remedies applications?
Any comment?
What was your question, Mr. Mayor?
About addressing Armando Benavides' concern?
I think those are things that we can look into. I think, as I understand it, he's asking if there's a way that we can find mitigations for the disruptions due to builders remedy projects.
Right.
It's something that might be a little premature, because we're not sure how many of those projects will actually go forward, but I'm assuming that some of them do, we can look at those mitigations when the time comes. I think it's a, it's an appropriate thing for us to be looking into is what, how we, how we mitigate the effects of those conversions.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, next item. Christina?
So we are now back to the work plan, so you can see it up on the screen there, and it is an attachment to the agenda materials. And so, as mentioned, we'll just open it up now for any questions or comments from the council members on the work plan and on the status of the different items.
Are there any questions? Yvonne?
I'll start with the transportation master plan. I would like to hear an update, please, on where we're at with this. If we've had community meetings, I'd like to know if we could get recordings of those meetings. We've had recordings in the past when we did community meetings, and what, where that will lead us to, how many meetings we anticipate having, et cetera.
I didn't hear the last part of the question.
Can we record the meetings?
So, we have had, we, so we have a stakeholders group that has met once. We have a community meeting scheduled for November 8th at the Community and Cultural Center, and that's updated on the website. That can be recorded. That will be an in-person meeting. We will be coming to the council in November with the transportation master plan update kickoff for the council. That will obviously be recorded. And then we will have another Zoom community meeting online early 2024, and that will be recorded. And we will have them also visiting our Pining Commission and Parks and Recreation Commission before the end of the year, likely following the council, which will also be recorded.
Does that mean then the only non-recording is the meeting that just happened?
The stakeholders meetings have been in a smaller conference room in person. We have not planned to record those.
Can we record those? I'd like to see and understand or attend.
I don't believe you can attend, because we would have to have, let the entire council attend and then run it as a council meeting. We can look into that. It doesn't, there's 25 people, like, setting up microphones and that sort of thing is not something we have the capability to do in that structure in the room that I have, but we could look at some type of recording.
Are there minutes available for those meetings?
They're already actually posted. Oh, they will be posted by tomorrow. I have, I'm working on posting them.
I'm going to look at the minutes for that, but I'd like to get a recording of any stakeholder meetings that are being held on the transportation plan. This is something that's critical to our general plan. It's a major undertaking for the city, and I think that that should be completely open to everybody, including myself and my colleagues.
Okay, very good. Thank you. We'll, we'll look into that further.
Anything else on the work plan? And then if I can ask Sergio, we're going to flip it to the follow-up items, just in case council wants to reference that as well.
I have more items if my colleagues do not.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
Okay. Let's see. I'll start with the explore of spanned existing tax revenue. I wanted to know, is there any developments with that? Ensuring the long-term sustainability of impact and user fees to ensure the long-term sustainability of the infrastructure services. Wondering if there's any update on impact and user fees. I would like to hear how things are going at the outdoor sports center with our management there. I understand there's been some changes.
How about one question at a time?
Sure. Okay, so I'm going to ask Dad to come up, but I'm going to get this started. So the first one that Council, Yvonne is asking about is number 14. Explore newer, expand existing tax revenue sources to address cities' unfunded needs and economic impacts due to COVID-19. And so that is a conversation that is ongoing, and it's really trying to determine how do we increase our revenues to meet all of the needs that we have. And so, you know, we don't have anything that's coming forward to the council in the near term, but in the midterm, we will be providing some options for the council to consider. Number 16, Dad, I'll ask you to talk about our impact and user fees and any recent updates on those.
Yes, good evening, dark morning. Finance Director, yes, periodically, we do review our user fee schedules, include development user fees as well as impact fees. As I mentioned, on the project that finance is undertaking right now is we reviewing the wastewater rate, including waste, potential wastewater rates, impact fees, or capacity review. The impact fees last review, I believe, was a few years ago, as well as user fee when we did update in 2021, or I think right after the COVID. So we do periodically look at our fees, as well as the services that we provide, if there's any fees that could be applied, just like the carry concealed weapon license fee that we went to council of approval just a few months ago.
Thank you, Dad.
Okay, the next item, I think, was item number 17, which was an update on the outdoor sports center. Christina, before that, could I ask, when we're talking about the existing tax revenue, Dad, can you give us some idea of what we're looking at when we talk about tax? Are we looking at sales tax? Are we looking at, you know, property, what is it? What type of a tax are we, are we possibly considering?
So number 14 is referencing, looking at revenue sources specifically on taxes. And so, different ways to do that, that we continue to explore and have explored. We, a few years ago, had a group that got together, and the council decided that time to not move forward with a revenue measure. Any sort of tax would require voter approval. So first, it would come to the council for consideration, and then assuming council wanted to move forward, we would put it on the ballot. And so it could mean expanding an existing tax. So if we wanted to do sales tax, having an add-on sales tax, a new tax could be a utility users tax, like our neighbors to the north and the south. So those would be a couple of different examples. And then above and beyond what's here, I mean, there's other non-tax options that, you know, are out there.
Okay, great. That's great. I remember some years ago, we had entertained some of those, so I was just trying to get some type of synopsis of what we might explore. Thank you. Okay, so number 17 was the question about the outdoor sports center. We have a third-party operating agreement. And to ask again what your specific question is on that, I'd like to hear about how things are going with management of the outdoor sports center, an update on that.
I think things are going good. We just posted their use statistics on the website from the last fiscal year about two weeks ago, and we should have the financials for the last fiscal year very shortly. They have, from what I told me, that they've done well. So just like last year, they will put money in, give money back to the city to go into the Facility Reserve Fund. I think you said something about management. They are in the transition, or we're recruiting for a new director. That person left. But they have a team of people working there, so it's not just, you know, one person. So there's been no, there's no been, there hasn't been any loss. There's continuity of their management, so that's been pretty good.
Okay, good. I'm glad to hear that. So this is just the director?
Yeah, it is a key person there, but there are other people working there, so they've had an interim person doing the work, and with support from volunteers as well. So it's, the continuity's been pretty good.
Okay, and how long have they been gone?
About a month.
A month. And do we have an anticipated time when they'll be replaced?
I think they've just finished the hiring process.
Great, so we should have someone soon?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay, that's very relieving. Thank you. Can I continue?
Please, go right ahead.
Okay. I wanted to ask, it says implement the Climate Action Plan. I'm just wondering if there was anything that we should be looking for with that? Chris?
We are continuing to work on the Climate Action Plan. If you remember, we didn't really fund that program, so it was kind of a secondary effort from staff. We did receive a grant, a two-year grant, so we're funding a part-time position, 20 hours a week, on the Climate Action Plan implementation. And we've been, as you, as you know, the Climate Action Plan really consists of two major things that relate to decarbonization of buildings and of vehicles. And so we've been focusing on the building components internally and externally, and in getting ready to focus on the vehicle components internally. We've been doing a lot of work, have made a ton of progress on purchasing vehicles, although we have one outside this building right now, but are working on the infrastructure for that component. So we are, we are making progress, and, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. I didn't understand, I'm aware of the Community Police Academy in Spanish, but I was not quite clear on the parent project classes. Yes, Chief?
Yes, our school resource officer partners with the district attorney's office, who's had several classes, as well as our Morgan Hill Unified School District. They had a class more recently. I'd have to get you the date.
Okay. I think the P-Bid, we addressed, so I think that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne. Anyone else? If not?
Okay, so our next item is the council future agenda items. And so, Sergio, if you don't mind flipping it. And so, the council has the opportunity at each council meeting at the end of the agenda to add future agenda items. And so we created a new process recently, just to put some timelines and structure to it. And so, we provided an updated schedule. And so it is, I believe, the fourth attachment in your packet. And I think Sergio is going to try to pull it up. You know, it's the fourth attachment. So it's by meeting date, by council member, the request, just a quick summary of the request, the teammate that's responsible for working on the agenda item, and then the estimated completion date. So the council member brings it up, we add it to this list, and then what ends up happening is we will then bring it back. I think it's within 45 days to, you know, once we receive the summary from the council member, and then it'll be agendized. And when it's agendized, we do provide a brief staff report with a paragraph or a summary from the council. And then the discussion is held at the council meeting to determine whether or not we have a majority of the council that wants to further explore the item. And so, like the work plan, we just want to get any sort of feedback or answer any questions that the council might have on these items.
Any comments or questions on these items?
I'll write an update that I did just very recently on my item. I put in three of these for the longer-term agendas, so that my colleagues are aware. A discussion on festival safety and fencing, as well as the discussion on, pardon me, the ag policy, the ag conservation policy. So I have submitted for those, so I just want to make you all aware.
Good, okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. If none others? Very good. Yvonne? You just keep rolling.
I'm just here to help you. I wanted to ask, when we talk about, there's some things that look a little bit old on here for me, but when we're talking about the request a speed study to reduce the speed limit through downtown to 15 miles per hour, that was happening during conversations about closing lanes. What specifically is that? Are you saying we want to pay for a study?
Incorporated in the first part of the transportation master plan, which is an update to our speed survey. There's new legislation that allows speed limits to be lowered below 25 miles an hour. So as our survey is completed, we will have the opportunity to look and see if that's feasible for downtown. Of course, the goal with this is to make sure it's enforceable, but that will come to the council. And that will come in the earlier part of the transportation master plan, within, by the springtime.
Great. So we have been having a conversation on council years past. Can we reduce the speed? We thought that would be a simple way to fix it, but at that time, we weren't able to reduce it. So now there's legislation, you're saying, that will allow us? Great. Thank you.
Potentially, potentially. We have to finish the survey.
Potentially.
Yeah, and the police department needs to check with the courts and the judges to make sure that they're going to upload those speed tickets, because currently, if the speed limit now is set for 35, and the survey says that it's, the speed is capable, or the road is capable of handling 45, they're releasing those citations. So that's also changed our enforcement measures.
Okay, so that's, that's what necessitates the survey, is we're trying to show that it wouldn't, it really isn't best for people to be going at a certain speed. Like, we're trying to say that it should be at a slower speed, or why are we doing the speed survey?
Because the law says you have to. So we're going to do the speed survey and the analysis to make the determination, and then at the same time, they'll look at the new legislation that is specific to downtowns and different types of areas, schools, that would allow you to reduce the speed limit. It also changes how you can calculate the speed limit on all streets, instead of rounding up, rounding down on the 85th percentile. And that's why we have a consultant helping us look at it, because it's pretty complicated, and it's early, as the chief said. So we, that's, we need to have the consultant do the work, and then bring to the council something that's defensible for you all to approve. something that's defensible for you all to approve.
The consultant, where are those budgeting, where are those dollars being allocated from?
It's included in the transportation master plan. We've already conducted a lot of survey of collecting, basically how fast cars are going through the streets. So we've been collecting the data, and then they're gonna be working on that. We'll be reviewing it and bringing it to the council.
Okay, fantastic. As part of that and the whole discussion about downtown, I know I have brought up many times, talked about putting stop signs, stoplights at some of the intersections that don't have them now. Are we looking at that now as part of the transportation plan and the slowing of speed in downtown?
We're looking at, yes, yes, we're looking at those sort of things.
I heard yes.
In general.
Twice.
Yeah. We're looking at how traffic flows across the whole city. I can't tell you that that is something that will work or not work. So we need to just go through the process, and you'll have a chance to talk about that when we're talking specifically about the transportation master plan.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Gino?
Thank you, mayor. So, Chris, this study, the traffic study, would that also include taking into consideration automobile accidents and pedestrian accidents?
Yes.
Very good. Okay.
May I?
No, we're gonna go to public comments.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so at this point, we are going to open it again. Young men, if you'd like to come up, make more public comments, you're welcome to it. You've got a sandwich, so. No, I'm just kidding with you guys. So we do want to open it now to public comment. Do we have any, anyone interested in making comments?
Yes. Doug, near head?
Good evening, Doug.
Good evening, council, staff, guests. For the record, my name is Doug.
If you can turn the mic towards you, that'd be great. Thank you.
Well, but then it would be recorded. For the record, my name is Doug Muirhead. I live in Morgan Hill. I just want to complain once again, I've said this before, that this thing that's called the work plan is actually a laundry list. Real work plans have milestones, they have deliverables, they have level of effort, they have priorities. I really can't imagine your employees have work plans and they go in to meet with the supervisor and supervisor says, what are you working on? Oh, a bunch of things. How's it going? It's going well. Great, we'll see you in six months. So you have the CAL FIRE agreement, and it's marked as complete. That's great. I believe that cycles every five years. So complete, how long ago? When will you be doing it again? But the one that just annoys me to no end is the recycled water one. We're working on it. Its status is ongoing. Absolutely no other information on it. So, you know, you can be happy with this work plan if you want, but it is woefully inadequate in terms of telling us what you're doing and how it's going. So just as someone who really loves process, I thought I'd suggest that maybe you ought to improve this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Anyone else?
Mayor, please, do it. You have a scanner.
Oh, please, come on up.
Hello?
How are you? Please, give us your name and...
My name is Justin Coughlin, and I just want to say thank you guys for everything. And the sandwiches were, they were just the best. Thank you guys so much for the sandwiches. And are we allowed to get a second?
Help yourself.
All right. Well, thank you.
All right. Please, come on up.
Hi, Brandon Vigansky again. I didn't get a chance. I wanted to thank you for everything you guys do. It's a big part of this town. You guys do a lot, and people don't see it, and you guys get a lot of hate for it, but you have all my respect. And it truly means a lot. I've had a couple of experiences, and you guys have been there for me, and my family, everything. I fly, I fly a flag on the back of my truck every day, and it's not for attention, it's not for anything, it's for you guys. And same with CAL FIRE. Actually, what I want to do when I grow up is be a firefighter. And I'm actually visiting colleges right now for fire science. But I wanted to thank all you guys for everything you guys do. You guys don't get enough appreciation, so I just wanted to thank you guys for everything you guys do.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for taking the time to do that.
Thanks.
Really appreciate it. Nice. Okay. Any other, do we have any other comments? Seeing none, I know, exactly. We're all, we're all touched by that. Thank you for that. That, that was great. Next item is about city council norms and ethics policy.
Yvonne did a good job.
Who's gonna lead on, sorry?
Right here. I'm gonna start the conversation.
You go right ahead.
Okay, so Sergio's gonna pull up the norms.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, it's okay, I'm gonna start it off. So what's included in your packet is basically the norms that you've seen. They were adopted again with changes on January 27th. And what we've done is just to add one. And so we asked for feedback on our policy, our code of conduct policy. And then the items, really, if the council wants to consider it, we thought it was something more for the norms, which is the last one, only leave a meeting for appropriate reasons and return from breaks in a timely manner. So we have this, the norms on here for just council's reference. You know, the council can decide whether or not they want to leave that last one on there, or just remove it and just stick with what was adopted earlier this year. And then just hand in hand with that, we thought it'd be a good idea to include the ethics policy. So right in the foyer, you see the ethics policy, the one-pager that the council members, commissioners, and teammates have signed. And so we included that as well. And so it really just boils down the ethics policy into five different areas: honesty, respect, responsibility, fairness, and loyalty. We've also attached the ethics policy, which we spoke about, I believe, in the, in March, for the second day of our goal setting, and so we've included that as well. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Christina. I do appreciate that. Back in March, when we talked about this, the norms, I felt pretty strongly that the list is just beyond reasonable and that we needed to really pare this down. And again, I'm gonna stick with the fact that I think we probably, if you look at the ethics policy, there's five, there's five categories, honesty, respect, responsibility, fairness, and loyalty. To me, that sums up everything that we should be considering as far as how we do businesses, council members, you know, interact here and with the public. I would suggest that if we do anything, we either take these council norms and place them under one of these five categories and really then just emphasize or really stay focused on these five categories under the ethics policy. If you've got a whole page here and we keep adding to it, I mean, the list is, it's not even numbered. This is not possible to really try to track that and hold one another accountable to this sort of a long laundry list of items. So I want to bring that up again. We don't have to, we don't have to tonight necessarily bring those, all those items under each of those five categories. I think Hillary had done that for us back in March. Should be something that we consider. I just don't think, I just don't think this longer list is anything that, it's just not reasonable to try to, to try to really work through. So I'd be open to hearing your thoughts on this and where we might go from here. So, you had some thoughts, I think, initially? Please, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with you. I've never been a fan of this list. You know, we're all adults, high school is way behind us.
Hey, hey, careful, careful. We've got some high school students here.
Well, they're probably doing a much better job than I did. But, you know, there's not one sitting here that hasn't offended any, any one of those rules at one point, right? And we all do it, not with mean intention, it's just...
Yeah.
It happens, right? And, you know, we soon need a second page, because we keep adding it. It's almost embarrassing to read it. I hate that list. I honestly hate it. It is so, it's almost insulting that we have to have these kinds of lists. I agree with you, the ethics policy, even that goes, goes for me, almost too much into details, right? I don't think we need more lists and policies. We just need to be cognizant of what we're doing, when we're doing it. And if I do something I'm not supposed to do, I hope someone will tell me afterwards, right? So that I know, because I might not know in the moment.
Right. Good point.
That's, that's my take on this.
Yvonne?
I mean, I don't hate the list, but I do think that maybe, you know, somebody was disgruntled with that call or someone that came up with the list. So I would say, I'm not a fan. I know that I admit I have returned from a break later. I would rather than just add stuff to the list, I would make a suggestion that when we have breaks, that we do at least 10 minutes. I know I do use my break for a restroom break, but I always will either call or text or check in with home. And so for me, five minutes is not gonna do the job. Often, people will stop me or I'll, you know, so I just think if we could do 10 minutes, that might be a better break for us, just as a staff.
Normally, we do, I mean, as occasion, but I get where you're going with that.
Yeah, just, I mean, rather than throwing things on the list, I'm just trying to see if we could just communicate, as Renee's saying, that we could maybe make things better.
And again, a lot of that just falls under respect, right? So I mean, again, we don't have to come up with 14 other items. It just falls under respect. So that's why I think we just need to hone that down or get rid of the list and know that everything that we deal with falls under these five categories and that now becomes not just our ethics policy, but our norms. This is kind of where I'm going, if that's, you know, again, we could decide tonight, yeah, let's, let's do it that way and go forward, or if we want to have a deeper discussion, we can...
Or we just move on and leave it and move on to the next thing.
Yeah, we could. No, we could. If you said, let's just do it that way, we could just move on and give direction to staff to say, okay, that's what we're going with. Did anybody, Gino?
Thank you, mayor. So I, I'd like to just bring up that the reason for that list was because there were times in the past, not the current, but in the past, that these were being abused. And it didn't show really right to one another on the council, nor did it show to the public. So these were brought forward to remind us, these are some of the things that we really should abide by. Now, in the, in the interim, this ethics policy came about too, and that brought it real more focused and into perspective. So I certainly don't mind incorporating some of that list into this, and maybe Hillary could work her magic in there. So I'm, I'm all for that. But I'd just like to, you know, remind us that this list was there for a reason, and we really have to make sure that we do all these things.
And I agree, and you know, I think, I think, you know, let's say by chance, I'm just gonna pick one of these off the list here, let's say we, okay, to ask the council to continue an item if not ready. Okay, well, maybe that's not as easy to, come prepared. I mean, let's just say we do that. Someone doesn't come prepared. I don't think we have to have it listed under a norm. I think we could say, well, that didn't show much respect. And we could still address that with a council member, even if it's not formally listed anywhere, is all I'm saying, you know? That's why I think if we hone it down to the five, you know, those five, those five categories, or those now become our five things we're, we're looking at, it just simplifies it and still allows us to approach one another. And actually, quite frankly, Yvonne and I have done that once to each other. We've, afterwards approached one another and said, hey, sorry about this, or I didn't mean it that way. So I think, I think, you know, just again, whether it's a list of 20 items or a list of five, right, and she knocked me out, and I was like, okay, I'm sorry. But, but I think it's just a matter of saying, let's have the conversation if something we felt was, whether offensive or maybe violated one of these, one of these five categories, I think just having the conversation, you know, we don't have to necessarily, well, here it is on the norms, so you violated that one, is all I'm getting at. I think Marilyn had some comments first.
Thank you. Yeah, this list is quite extensive. Some of these are just like, you know, your silence yourself on, duh, you know, be engaged, duh. So I think some of it's kind of overkill, but some of it is important, I think. So perhaps, you know, we can look at the things that really affect one another, you know, besides, you know, cleaning the air if needed, have hard discussions. That, that's acceptable, and it should be, I think, acknowledged that we're allowed to do that. And I just think that's really an important thing. So I'm all for getting rid of this list, but looking at the, what really affects how we work together and putting it under the ethics, you know, as an item.
I see. Maybe included somewhere in the statement of one of those five?
Right, right.
Okay.
That's my idea, that I think that we could sort of eliminate this, but look at the really key things that's gonna affect how we work as a group. Like, you know, silencing yourself on, yeah.
We want to do this, then, so we don't camp on this too long tonight. Do we want to, much like we did, you know, a week ago regarding the, I think, the other, the other policy, the code of conduct? If you have some thoughts in particular about those items, you want to forward those to Christina, and then from there, she can work with staff to then find out where to fit that into these five categories and then bring it back at some point in the future? Does that work?
That works for me, but...
And just to clarify, we're still gonna keep our ethics one-pager intact, but it's almost like, okay, here are the council norms that are consistent with our ethics policy, and then we break down the five. Hillary does her magic.
Yep.
Okay. Mayor, if I should just say too, I'm, we are using staff time Hillary, a very valuable resource, to do this. I mean, maybe we just, again, we leave the council norms and, you know, if there's changes that people feel strongly about, but Hillary may come up with something different that we all don't, and we've just spent 10 minutes going, you know, talking about this that we haven't even gotten into.
Yeah. I don't want to leave the council norms. We need to be done with it.
Yeah.
They need to fall under the, one of these five categories, is where I'm going with it. I just...
I would rather we just leave it and nobody has to figure out what categories they go under. I don't know. That just seems like another exercise.
Well, Hillary's already done it. She did it back in March. So that, that already exists.
Move on.
...was to drop the list.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that what you meant? Just drop the list?
No, I meant just leave the list, leave the ethics policy, and move on. We, we just keep...
Well, here's the thing. Because every, now, we've done this twice since I've been here.
Yeah, probably, I've done it maybe 10 times.
About these norms, that quite frankly, I don't want to say mean nothing, but we only look at them twice a year. We could look at these five categories and all of that, all of that fits under these five categories. Everything on that, everything on those norms fits right there. So...
So, a couple of things. One is, it's not gonna take a whole lot of time to reorganize them. The second thing is, I think we just don't want to lose the side of the why, like, why are we even talking about this? The norms were just created to figure out how can this council be as well-performing as possible? Like, how can the council get through, you know, an agenda? And so these were identified several years ago as ways that, you know, the council can be as, you know, high-functioning as possible, you know? So some of them are petty, you know, small, you know, turn off your cell phones, yes, of course. So we'll organize them, we'll bring them back, you know, in, I guess it's February. I don't recommend there's much discussion, you know, if people, you know, we'll share it ahead of time just to get any sort of input, you know, and then we just follow them away and refer to them when we need, when we need to.
Yeah, so my take, I mean, in seven years I've been on this council, twice a year we talk about it. We spend more time on this list than on the important topics.
Right.
And in this list, be mindful of time, but give enough time to discuss issues. Well, which one is a big one, right? You can't win that battle, right? We spend more time on this list than on the important topics.
Right.
And in this list, be mindful of time, but give enough time to discuss issues. Well, which one is a big one, right? You can't win that battle, right? And again, it's, it's supposed to remind us to, to do the right things, but those who offend, they keep offending, right? And, and that list doesn't solve any of that. And, and, and again, I, I think when someone does something wrong, talk to that person, right? And, and talk to me if I do something wrong. For me, that's much better than, than here's a list and shove it in my face, right? It's not gonna solve anything, 'cause I'm not gonna memorize that list. It's just not gonna happen.
It'll be a test.
Yeah.
No, it is so petty. It's ridiculous, it's embarrassing. And, and, and again, there's not one person of the five of us that hasn't violated several of those items at one point or another.
Right.
And I'm not gonna point it out tonight, but I encourage.
Of course. Yeah, yeah, and again, like you said, not intentional, it happens. And when it's, if it's offensive enough, then we approach one another, yeah.
And I do it myself.
Yeah. So, let's do it. Are we okay with, are we okay with that then? Okay, very good. Christina, you've got your.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. All right, so our next item has been, is a continued item, and so it's our code of conduct. And so, Sergio, I'm gonna ask, thank you, thank you for doing the back and forth. So, he's gonna pull it up. So, basically, we provided a document, a draft document at the last meeting. And the document is including the materials that you'll see on the screen. It momentarily shows a red line. And so, what the council's general, general consensus was is to kinda shorten the document and to, you know, generalize it a bit. And so, we've attempted to do that. And so, it's on the screen now. The first section that you can see is to really make it apply just not to the, the members of the public, but also to staff and elected officials attending the meeting. And then, the public meeting decorum, you'll see that we've really simplified that. There was a request to get rid of things like clapping, but really just reference, you know, disruptive behavior in general. And then, we just removed some of the things, I guess it's C through E, related to refraining from speaking while others are speaking, the reference to attire, the reference to feet on chairs, that sort of thing. So, those are gone. And then, in the sign section, we kinda simplified that by primarily removing some of the detailed items and just put sharp objects. And then, lastly, just a couple wordsmithing, smithing items for the Section 3, addressing the council or commission. Wanted to make it clear that the dais shouldn't just be approached during the meeting. So, with that, we opened it up to the council to see if there's any further modifications council members would like to make.
Renee, go ahead.
I, I had concern with the whole idea before. I, I think if, if anything, it should, we should be able to display it on a slide during a meeting and, and say, "Hey, this, this is the norm for the meeting," so that we follow it and anyone in the public follow it and knows what that is. But it really comes down to, and, and I learned that again at the conference in Sacramento last week, there's not too much we can do. If someone tells me everything they wanna tell me and, and uses the F-word a million times within the three minutes they have, they can do that. As long as it happens within the three minutes they have, I, I can then maybe, when I, when I get time to speak, address it, or I can just smile and, and just take it in, as we usually do. But, but they have every right to do that under the First Amendment, as long as it's not disrupting the meeting. And, and in all those years, I don't remember any incident that was disruptive of a meeting that we had. So, so this is all we could do, is, is have norms that prevent the disruption of a meeting. If someone wants to say something we don't like, they, they have every right to do so, as nasty as it is. I'm not making up those laws, but I'm, I'm sure the city attorney will confirm it. So, that's what I learned last week. It was an eye-opener for me, that we really have to just sit here and smile whenever someone tells us things the ugliest way they want to, if they do choose to do that. That's their right to do.
Yeah, and, and I would say this policy, there are limited exceptions. I think if somebody is using racial, ethnic, or other types of slurs in their speech that are the kinds of words that are likely to provoke, provoke somebody or intended to provoke somebody, those are not protected even within the three-minute speech. But otherwise, you're absolutely right. This isn't intended to address what happens during people's three-minute speech. What we're seeing around the country more and more are people, there's two, kinda two sets of groups that are trying to disrupt public meetings. One is using their three minutes, and they say really horrible hateful things. And that's not something we can do anything about, other than perhaps other, communicating that that's not our values in Morgan Hill. But there are other groups that are organizing protests in council meetings to try to disrupt meetings. And under, absent a policy, all we can do is adjourn the meeting. And if the police aren't able to get it under control, we have the meeting in a conference room, and the only person who's gonna be allowed in is Luis, who's not even here anymore, because it's a qualified member of the press. We don't wanna get in a position where we're holding our meetings in, in private with only the press in attendance. So, the idea of a policy is not to control what people say in their three minutes. They're allowed to say, be as offensive as they wanna be. But, it's what happens outside of those three minutes, and if people are being disruptive, we want, we want the ability to have a policy to put people on notice that if you continue to chant or sing or what other things that people are doing in protest, that you're gonna be asked to leave, and if you don't leave, you're gonna be escorted out. And, and we have to have a policy that puts people on notice of what that behavior is.
And, and that's what I support, but it has to be tied to what, what we, we define as disrupting the meeting, right? But, but, you know, bringing a sharp object, right, or a backpack with you, and, and, I mean, it goes so much into details still here, that, that it goes way beyond of it. And I, I think it just assumes that people coming in here are mean and have bad intentions. And, and I think that, that's the wrong approach for us to, to create a policy around that, that have, has this, this, this negative assumption of people coming in here, right?
Myself, because we do have, and you didn't see it because you weren't in the room when it occurred, it has elevated now to a level that is concerning with some of our regular attendees.
But it didn't disrupt the meeting, because I was.
No, no, it doesn't mean that it might not at some time. And so, because it became near physical with one of our council members, that's what prompted me to say, "Hey, we need to do something a little bit more aggressive on our end, as far as having the policy in place." The policy is, again, we can still go through this and, and hone it down. That's not the problem. We can get rid of the certain things here that we don't think necessarily still apply, but we do have to have some protections, both for the public and for the elected officials as well, as well as staff. So, Gino.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. First, I, I have to disagree with my fellow council member. No, no one in any way, shape, or form is trying to prevent somebody from saying whatever he or she wants to say within the three-minute timeframe. And I think our city attorney just nailed it perfectly, everything that he just said, relative to the key word disruptive, and again, also the mayor's words, what, what you just said. So, I, I think those are the things that we have to take into consideration. And because something didn't happen to you, that doesn't mean it didn't happen. So, I think we have to be proactive, and we have to put something together. And there's nothing wrong with what's, what's here. I don't think it's complicated. I think it's common sense, and I think it's long as we really understand, as our city attorney said, you know, we give every right to the public and their three minutes. And the, the guidelines around the disrupting, and that's the key word, that's what we have to focus on.
Right.
So, so again, Gina, then, I don't know if you read it, but here it says, "Abusive language is inappropriate and may cause removal from meeting." So, if the person does that during their three-minute speech, you cannot do that. It's not okay to write that down, Gina. It is not okay. And, and don't interrupt me, do not, do not interrupt me. It's not okay. You're just violating one of the lists you like. Again, the, the, don't correct me, but, but again, I listened in to the session last week. They really strongly discouraged writing these kinds of policy, 'cause it gets a city possibly in, in legal limbo, especially where a removal is, is extreme, is considered as extremely drastic to be done. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that was my takeaway from that meeting last week.
Yeah, I think, I think we make, we could be clearer on what we mean by offensive speech. If somebody uses racial epithet, that is, and, and it's something that we are starting to see more, more even locally now, people using words that are intended to provoke a response from the people hearing the words. And that's a violation of law. That's not protected speech. Somebody can use the F-word. We run into problems because we do broadcast our meetings on local cable, and I know some people watch it. And we, and so, we run into problems with, for, if we're broadcasting our meetings where that kind of language is being used. But we can cut the feed to our video, but we can't stop somebody from using, and so, we can, we can clarify that. We can't stop somebody from using foul language. We can stop somebody from using language that's intended to provoke somebody into a response.
What you're saying, I'm sorry.
I don't wanna use the words.
On the removal part.
If, if there, if somebody.
The lawyers, those were city attorneys too, in that room, at least one of them. They strongly discourage the removal part of, that should be a last resort.
Well, and, and we all, as the audience they were speaking to, was elected officials. There was a different story that was told in the city attorney's section of the conference. There is a time and a place when people should be removed, and that's when, you know, the, uh, the, the, this law was specifically passed because of inappropriate comments made about a council member's that we all know, her son's sexual orientation, and using the other F-word. And there was no recourse at that time to, other than to shut down the meeting and send everybody home. And so, this law was passed to be able to put people on notice. If you're gonna say, use those words that are intended to provoke a violent reaction, you're gonna be asked to stop using the word. And if you don't stop using the word, then you're gonna be asked to leave. And, and in those circumstances, that's the type of circumstance in which I think it would be appropriate to escort somebody out. But if it's just somebody who's being obnoxious, that is not gonna cut it. And so, what we would recommend is that, you know, it's the mayor has the authority under the law, but the mayor's not gonna make any of those decisions without first looking to me or to the police chief.
Right. Marilyn, I'm too quick, Renee, is that, you get?
Yeah, again, it, it, it's a legal issue, right?
And we can clarify that language to make sure that it's, it's a little bit more specific than just.
You have to be very careful how you treat it and then how you word it. And I'm not making this up, I really, I listened in and learned something. And, and to me, it's important, if we have a policy, that we, we do it right, or then don't.
And I think that's the key to it, is that we do it right. Marilyn.
My comment is, the world is changing, unfortunately. Some good, some bad, but I think we cannot be, at this point, naive. And I think a policy is necessary. Removal of somebody from a meeting is the last straw. I mean, you know, hopefully, we'll never see that. But we should have something to protect ourselves, in case it comes to that point someday. So, I am in favor of having this policy. I understand what you two have been talking about, and I totally agree. You know, there is, you know, some language you have to just take. But if it's against a certain, you know, population or something, we, we have a right to say, "This is not okay." So, I am in, I am in favor of this policy with some corrections and the deletions that have been made. And I say we keep this. And like I said, we just can't be naive anymore.
Thank you, sorry. Thank you for that. Yvonne.
Thank you. You know, this, this is a tough conversation to have. I wish that there were more public here, because I'm not opposed to taking some heat. I've taken a little of my time. I've given a little too, so it's fair. And I think that we should. I think that this role, that you gotta take some heat, right? You're making tough decisions. You're making decisions for a lot of people. And we, our staff takes heat, and, and I think we have to too. So, if it's being, and I, I think what we're feeling from the public is, they don't want this weaponized. They don't want this being used to shut down. You know, if you're talking about uncomfortable, because you're uncomfortable that someone disagrees with you, and, and that's very different than you're uncomfortable because you're afraid. And I've never had something happen in this, on the dais or in this, in this room. And so, I wanna clarify, because somebody had asked me about that. I think last time I spoke, that I've had an instance happen with a member of the public, and I have. And it was not here. So, I just wanna be clear about that. And I did feel, I, I didn't like it. I felt very unsafe. I was with my kids. And there's a line, there is an absolute line for that. But I have never seen that. I've been in this chamber hall for over seven years, and I've never seen that happen. Not on the planning commission, not, you know, in one of our city council meetings. I hope to God I never do see that happen. But I, I think we need, I, I like the idea of something that we can post, something that is very, you know, short and to the point. But I also feel, and I like, the idea that we do need to protect ourselves. And I, I don't think you're saying not to. I think the concern you have is, you know, us misusing this and, and kind of weaponizing it. And the speech, if somebody wants to stand up and cuss for three minutes and, you know, make a scene of themselves, so be it, I suppose. But if they're going to be using hate speech that is provocative, that, I think, is where we do have to have something where we can, right, draw the line. Because if we're gonna, you know, we always have our, our department here, our police department here. And, you know, we've, we've had occurrences that have happened before. Not here, not here, but have happened everywhere. Now, I would say I was in this chamber when that exchange happened of words. And I did not think that that was, I did not think that that was anything dangerous, by any means. It wasn't anything near of what I've experienced, but, you know, perhaps my colleagues, that was their own perspective.
The police chief was enough, concerned enough.
I did, yes, I was here.
Okay, so, that did cross the line? It was way over the line. There's none of us, whether it's staff, elected officials, audience, public, should not have somebody else right up in their face, finger shaken, the whole thing. And that's what occurred.
I don't know, what I'm saying is, I don't know if that means that we throw someone out of the.
I didn't say, I didn't say that. But if that did occur, it does, it does create a situation. Again, this was after the meeting. That's a whole different animal. If it happened during the meeting, yeah, absolutely, that would, I would, I would remove someone for that. If, if in the meeting, they come up to you and had that sort of exchange where it looked as though it were threatening, and the police chief had to come up and get involved, that would be enough to remove somebody, in my opinion. That's, that's a line that's been crossed. And so, again, it's not about someone standing up, cussing, or yelling names, or even calling me names. Go, go for it. I've got, I've had plenty of it. We're not looking to remove people for that. We, there is, there is a point at which, when the line is crossed, and we certainly will have others who can help weigh into that, it's not, it's just not me saying, "Out, out, out." That just wouldn't fly.
That's what, and that's what, this, this needs to be what the line is. This needs to define what that line is. So, that's what I'm saying, so it's not left to interpretation of somebody deciding, "Oh, well, you know, today, it's this line, because this person always speaks up, and tomorrow, wow, I sit with them on committee."
Somebody who's always speaking up. I think we know who that person is.
Or I'm on a, I wanna commit to somebody, and so I.
In somebody's face and really gave it, that would be a violation of, of.
And I agree. That's, that's a violation, and that's not the way that, you know, you wanna conduct. But if we have not set anything, we have not set anything, we have not set the standard.
That's what this policy is about.
Exactly. And that's why I'm saying, this needs to be, it needs to be much more concise, in my opinion.
That's, and then we can do that.
And it needs to be very clear, so there's as little, again, kind of like HCD has said to us, your standards will be, you know, objective. They will not be subjective, they will be objective.
Yeah, there, there will be some subjectivity to this. It can't, you know, I mean, we would have to go through a whole list of, you know, extensive sorts of violations. I think there's got to be some flexibility there, again, with having legal counsel and an officer here who help, can guide through that. But, but I'm with both of you on that. It's gotta be tightened up. Can't be something that's just, you know, so subjective. So, I, I get what you're gonna say.
One more example that I was given last week that really stuck with me, and I was, I didn't expect the answer. So, that, there, someone brought up an example, there was a member of the community standing in the background during the entire meeting and making the Nazi salute. And, and that was, that is okay. Believe it or not, that would be, last week we were told, that is okay.
I will not say that's okay. I will say that's not something that should subject somebody to removal.
It's not okay to do, of course not. To me, it's extremely offensive, but, but it's not considered disrupting the meeting.
And it, and it could have, I mean, that's a very fact-specific case. I think had the person done that in a way that was intended to provoke somebody, he was accusing the city council for the city of Santa Cruz of being Nazis. And that's, that was his, and I think it's a very fact-specific situations. I would say the only thing that should, that gets you kicked out immediately is if it's a physical. should, that gets you kicked out immediately is if it's a physical threat. So that's the only thing under the law that we can use to kick somebody out immediately. All we can do before that is provide warnings. Um, and so, so it's really, so it's really important to note that we're not, we're talking a lot about kicking people out of the meeting. I don't ever expect anybody to be kicked out of the meeting. I think it, I would, unless they're there to be kicked out, I would expect that the, at the most, what happens is the mayor says, hey, you're disrupting the meeting. And you're making loud noises while we're trying to have a meeting. Knock it off, or we're going to have to ask you to leave, and it'll, and the behavior will stop. But I, I think, yeah. And so we can, we will come back, when we come back for adoption, we'll clean up that language to make clear what abusive, when we talk about abusive language, we're talking about language that's intended to provoke a, a physical reaction.
So that's in 3C. Abusive language is inappropriate and may cause removal from meeting. So we'll clean that up, make it a little bit more specific.
Yeah, and we can take out the may cause removal. It violates the policy, violating the policy after, after multiple warnings is what would cause removal.
Another thing, I'm sorry, if I may, just one, one more sentence. The, I sent our city manager last week a link with some examples of how other cities are handling it. And they were able to read it up very concise in, in a paragraph. And I liked that. So maybe, maybe we can look into simplifying it.
We can look into that. I think our thought was, we want to be, we want to give, we want to give people the, if it's very generic, there's all, that's where we get into what Yvonne was talking about, where it starts to become kind of like, what does the mayor think is disruptive? We wanted to be as prescriptive as we can. So we can say, like, if you want to get up here and yell at us and call us names, you know, for your three minutes, we're, I don't think it's very productive or, or helpful, but that's your right. But if you want, if you're going to disrupt the meeting while it's going on, or if you're, you know, we want to make sure that it's very prescriptive. So people know what isn't prohibited, and we want to make it clear. And if what's not clear, we want to make it clear that we're not talking about criticizing us during your three minutes. Um, that's not what it's about. And, I mean, if it's, so if that's not clear, we want to make that clear. And these are the things that can get you in trouble. And you don't have to worry about, you know, if you're chewing your gum too loud, that we're going to say, you're disrupting the meeting, you have to leave.
And, you know, I totally get it. Most of us had incidents that, that we, we didn't feel safe at some point. There, we had our house tagged at one point, and of course it had to be pink and, uh, and stuff like that happens. Uh, it's not nice by people. But these, this policy doesn't cover that, right? It doesn't cover what happens after a meeting or outside this building, right? So, so maybe that's a, a different topic. You can give us advice.
That's his purview. Yeah. Okay, very good.
Because of things happening outside this chamber, we shouldn't create a policy for this chamber.
And where we're going to go with this, Yvonne, one last?
Yeah, I, I want to make sure that in the policy, any contact, anybody touching someone, I think that's immediate ejection from the meeting. I think if somebody is threatening you, um, you know, to physically do anything, I think that that is also. I think that if you've talked with somebody, if you have expressed to someone that they are not welcome to talk with you, or I think that's something that I think would be, you know, would be appropriate to share as a point. So that people, if there is a fear, a physical fear, and again, this has never happened to me in this chamber. But those, that's what I'm talking about, very, very specific.
And that's what they'll do. Excellent. Thank you. Chief, could you, would you mind removing Marilyn from the meeting? Giving me some threatening looks, and I think it's time for her to go. All right, very good. Thank you, guys. Great discussion. And thank you for the input. I think that gives...
Mayor, I know you're ready to move on, but I just want to express a couple of words of gratitude for the conversation. I think that above and beyond just what happens here with, with our elected officials, this also signals to staff and to the rest of the community, as to the community we want to be. So we appreciate this dialogue and conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And thanks again to the council members for that conversation. Good job. All right, we will go now to Dawn. Help us understand Rosenberg's Rules of Order.
And I think this can...
Oh, I'm sorry. They are, to the students, I think your, your paperwork is signed. If you want to stay for the rest of this exciting meeting, you're welcome to stay. If you want to, go ahead and, you're good to go. If your paperwork is signed, you're welcome to, uh, public comment. Yes, thank you, Yvonne, for that reminder. We will open it up for public comment and see if anybody's got any comments to make. Kim, anybody? Uh-oh.
Thought you were going to get away with not taking comment. Um, I really didn't want to talk to you about this tonight, but I decided I would. It's unscripted, which is dangerous for me.
Can you use the microphone, please?
Okay, back on the record, as they say. Um, I'm going to say a little bit about how this got on the agenda, which I don't like. And then I'm going to say a little bit about the content, which I don't like. Um, I do have to wonder what Chief Palsgrove looks like when he takes off his protector face and puts on his warrior face to become your enforcer. Hopefully, I won't live long enough to see that. I want to talk about, one of my favorite sayings is, don't use the law of large numbers with a small number. And so it's the mayor and his experience once, viewed by some small number of people and interpreted some way, but not subject to other people's assessment. As opposed to 10 years of attending your meetings and not seeing anything that would qualify for needing this particular item. Um, so the mayor, I don't know whether he directed or simply suggested this city manager put this on the agenda. Staff went off and did research and came up with the document. Um, and so here we are, not going through the usual future agenda item process as well. But be that as it may, you have this, you, some of you are happy with it, some of you fortunately are not. So I don't feel all alone in this. The item itself really does feel to me to be designed to give the feeling to the public that we are not good people, possibly. Um, that we are the enemy, and so we have to be managed. And, you know, how we dress and, and what we have in our pockets and how we talk to people up on the dais are all things that should be managed to keep you safe in the name of decorum. Um, and that I just find extremely offensive. There are two kinds of, of leaders in, in the world, my world, which I should say is not your world. I don't do social media. If there are hundreds of people out there that are haters, I don't know. So I just go on. Your world is a little bit different. And yes, the world has changed. But I'm not sure that the instances that we have seen rise to the level where you should be doing what you are doing. I used to attend county policy meetings. Supervisor Cortese was very prescriptive. He sicked law enforcement on someone that continued to be disrespectful to him. I don't know if the person ended up in jail or not. I found that very unpleasant. Uh, he also created the, the policy about signs and weapons and all that sort of stuff for board meetings. Supervisor Sumidian, I will say, was, is a respectful kind of person. And when people tried to do the same thing to him, he said, look, folks, we can't have a meeting like this. He has sheriffs. Uh, they put on their frowny faces and formed a line, and we all left the room. And most of us were later readmitted. The meeting went on. So I really object to this item, both the way it came about and its actual contents. Um, and so not wanting to have spoken to you tonight, I did anyway. And I'll have to look at the recording to see what it actually said. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to clear up one item. Um, this is an item that we had been planning to bring forward for actually a few months. And it wasn't at the request of the mayor. Um, this was as a result of the passage of SB 1100, which was done by Cortese after a pretty bad, at least one bad meeting in Los Gatos. And so he carried a bill. And so part of that bill is adopting of a code of conduct. And so that's why we brought that forward. Yes, the mayor had some comments about what had happened at the meeting, after the meeting. Um, but it was a staff-initiated item based on SB 1100. Dawn, anything to add to that?
No, that's right. And I think, having seen not just what's happened in Los Gatos, but in other cities, I understand exactly what Mr. Mayorhead's saying. And I, as somebody who believes very much in free speech, I, it's, it, there's always a balance in trying to not chill somebody's speech. And if we're making, the intent is not to make people feel like they're not wanted, because that, that's really not the intent. So we can look at that language and see if we can make it a little bit more user-friendly. But we would, from our perspective or from my perspective, bringing this forward is to be proactive, not reactive. I don't want to wait until we have a violent meeting where some people get beat up and bloodied to have a policy to, to remove people. And I don't want to have to shut the meeting down and go into a conference room, or shut the meeting down and see if we can sort out who was and wasn't involved in a fight. So I think having a tool is helpful. It should be a scalpel, not a sledgehammer. And if we're looking more like a sledgehammer than a scalpel, then we will look at that before we bring it back again.
Very good.
And that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Dawn. All right, we are going to, any other...
We have one speaker on Zoom. Armando Benavides?
Okay, go right ahead.
Uh, yes, hi, mayor and council members. So I'm going to throw in my two cents. I do, uh, I, I'm very glad whoever read, interlinated, which basically means cross out those silly comments regarding no clapping, no whispering, and all that kind of stuff. I, I do always believe that the key word is disturbance or creating a situation where the meeting cannot be held simply because of disruption. And I always believe the mayor, who is the person who is kind of overseeing and, and being the leader there, always has discretion to label somebody's behavior as disruptive or not beneficial to the meeting or causing such a chaos that it's creating a problem with the meeting going on. I, I, I mean, that, that is just a given. In, in any, uh, in any, uh, in any, uh, meetings where, with the county or, uh, more county or high school district or whatever it is, the president has such discretion. And to me, I think it's very important that if the, if the mayor deems that the behavior is disruptive and is creating havoc, obviously the mayor has to exercise some discretion. Sometimes there are some emotional issues. And some people may want, you know, whisper to each other, but just because they're whispering or talking to each other, they're not creating a disturbance. They're just having a private conversation. There's really no, no reason why somebody should be silenced completely. We're not in charge. Uh, we're in front of elected officials, but you're not, you know, like the king and queen. We're just there. And if we, if I want to talk to somebody and say, you know, the city council member seems like he's off the wall, I have a right to do that. So I'm glad that, um, qualifications, that it disrupts the behavior. And I would expect that the mayor would exercise some, some discretion in terms of not labeling everything, everybody, somebody talking that that's disrupting. Uh, that's my, my, my take on it. I, I believe that there's enough protections already, but, you know, that's, so be it. Thank you.
Thank you, Armando. Anyone else?
No, I'm not speaking.
All right, there being none. We'll move to item number seven. Dawn?
I will make this brief so that we will get out of here on time. And so, I think it was your last meeting, prior meeting anyway, the council adopted Rosenberg's Rules of Order as the rules of order for the conduct of council meetings. And there was, there was a question about why Rosenberg's Rules of Order and not Roberts or some other rules of order. And I'll address that. And then talk about why Rosenberg's Rules of Order was what our recommendation was. There really are, there are many, many different areas of parliamentary procedure or guides for parliamentary procedure. The two that are used most frequently by cities in California, where we tend to have smaller city councils, are Roberts, and it's a modified version of Roberts, because if you strictly follow Roberts Rules of Order, you'll be violating Brown Act and due process rights. So, so we've, so the cities that do follow Roberts follow a modified version of Roberts. Most cities are moving to Rosenberg's, like we did, because they're tailored specifically for local government. They're promoted, they're published and promoted by the California cities because they best address the issues that impact cities. We've talked about Sturgis and how Sturgis, California, I think we're the only city that was still using Sturgis. I think there are some school districts, maybe including ours, that still use the Sturgis Rules of Order, but our rules of parliamentary procedure. But, but really we're, we're the only city that I'm aware of that uses them. And they cause some issues when it comes to vote counting. And we're not, we never actually followed them anyway. Roberts Rules of Order, the reason we didn't recommend Roberts for, was partly because it's cumbersome. It's a, it's, the Sturgis is a condensed version, or condensed set of rules compared to, to Roberts. But also, Roberts requires, among other things, things that we have a hard time doing in simplified form. You have to make a motion pretty much to do anything. So there has to be a motion in a second to open it, to open an item, a motion in a second to open public comment, a motion in a second to close public comment. And then there's no discussion allowed until a motion is made on the floor. Motions have to be made in the affirmative. So you can't have a motion to deny. You, essentially, you start with a motion to approve staff recommendation, and then you can have a discussion. And then if you don't like it, you can vote, you just vote, you can make the motion to, to discuss staff recommendation and then vote no. But, but the motions, and under Roberts, motions are made in the affirmative. This causes a problem when it's a quasi-judicial and we're required to make findings. And so you have to make findings to vote no, and it becomes really confusing. So Roberts is, nobody strictly follows Roberts. There's always a modified version. The modified versions that I'm aware of tend to look a lot like Rosenberg's. And Rosenberg is very similar to the, both consistent with what your existing rules are as a council, and very similar to the way that both our council and planning commission operate in practice. So the mayor controls the meeting, we're up to the point of discussion. Like Roberts, Rosenberg's Rules of Order recommend that there be a motion on the table before discussion takes place, but it's not a requirement that that, so oftentimes, what we'll hear from, from councils and commissions is, well, we don't, I'm not ready to make a motion because I haven't heard my colleagues' thoughts. And we want to put together something that's going to get support. So can we at least see where we all are before we formulate a motion? Rosenberg's, doesn't, Rosenberg's recommends having a motion, but it does allow that extra discussion if it's needed. There are three main motions that, unlike the 20-something motions under Roberts, there are three main motions that are available under Rosenberg's. The first is to move the item. The second one is a motion to amend. And so you would use a motion to amend. For example, if there's a motion to approve staff recommendation, you, you're comfortable with staff recommendation, but you want something else too. Like, I'll, I'll move staff recommendation, but I want to see something come back. You would make a motion to amend to say, I'd make a motion to amend, um, to ask staff to come, to add a requirement that staff come back at a future meeting. If that's, if that's accepted to the maker in the second, or it could be a friendly amendment. If it's not, it's a formal amendment, and that amendment gets voted on before you go back to the original motion. The third motion is a substitute motion, and that's the motion to do something completely different. So those are the three. Yeah.
The, it's not quite the way we usually do it. The way this is worded is extremely formal, right? I make a motion, and then I make a motion to amend. But usually, we say, well, I'd like to ask the... But usually, we say, "Well, I'd like to ask the person who did the first motion whether he or she would be willing to amend."
Yeah, that's.
But that's not the way this is worded. So, so does the amendment motion actually have to be a formal motion? Or can it be a verbal request to amend the motion?
So, you can do it two ways. You can make that motion to amend. And if the maker and the seconder say that they will accept that as a friendly amendment, then it becomes a friendly amendment and we don't have to worry about the amendment. If they, maker or the seconder, either the maker or the seconder say, "No, I like my motion the way it is," then you can vote on that. That's.
Then you can vote on that?
On the amendment. On the amendment. So, you vote on the amendment whether or not the original motion gets amended. And then, if the original motion's amended, you vote on the original motion. It almost never comes to that because usually, the maker and the seconder have, have, you know, will accept it as a friendly amendment. But it could come to that. What we see more often, and by the way, Sturgis has the same process, but even more formal. So, so this isn't, this actually isn't something new. This has always been your procedure. But, but typically what happens, as Renee said, it's, it's, you don't have to make that formal amendment because the maker and seconder will accept it as a friendly amendment. It doesn't happen very often. The substitute motion is, under Sturgis, it's called a motion to amend by substitution. Under Rosenberg's, it's just a substitute motion. A substitute motion is essentially a motion to do something. So, you have a motion to approve staff recommendation, it gets seconded. You, you can make a, you don't like it, you don't, you want to deny the project, you can make a substitute motion to not approve staff recommendation and instead deny the item. And so, that's a substitute motion. Those are the three basic motions. The other, if, there's other, there's other motions, like intervening motions, not as many as in Rosenberg's. We don't typically use those very often, but we will occasionally have a motion to table, for example, or a motion, you know, a motion to table continued to a date certain. We will, or very rarely have a motion to call the question if somebody feels like the debate's going on for too long. Those don't happen very often. Motion to reconsider is the same rules. The, the thing about, one thing, it's in Rosenberg's, it's not in either of the other two rules, is really a direction for the mayor to, that I think is really, it's really about community engagement, which is something that Sturgis and Rosenberg are not about. That's not what they're about. And so, the recommendation that the mayor or staff make sure that we're announcing what the item is about at the beginning of the item, which we're good at. But then making, keeping the public informed while a motion is being, taking place so that the public doesn't, can follow all that. And then at the end, tell the, you know, make sure we're not just announcing the results, but announcing, you know, motion passed either unanimously, passed four to one with council member Smith voting no. Or if it's three to, you can announce, you know, three to with council member Smith Jones and so and so voting yes.
Okay, so we, okay, so we need to start doing that as we go?
We should start, and it's a good, it's a, it's a good practice. It's the reason we can do voice votes instead of roll call votes is that, is so that the council knows who voted how. So, if, because it sometimes gets chaotic and sometimes, sometimes there are disruptions, we, it's helpful, I think, if at the end of the items that we announce, here's what happened so that people who may not have been able to catch it know.
Sure.
That's the big, that's the only big difference in what you're doing now versus the old rules.
Right.
But with that, I'll take questions.
Marilyn?
During my absence on council, I was with the county of Santa Clara and they used quite often in their discussions the, they would say, kind of out of order, just kind of announce it, point of order. Is that, how is that addressed in this? And, and that meant they felt whoever was speaking or proposing something was not following the rules that we should be, how a motion should be taken. So, I just want to know, I mean, I have never in, whatever it is, years I've been here, ever had used that here. But in the county, it was quite used quite often. In fact, every meeting probably.
Yeah, that's a Roberts' Rules of Order thing.
Okay, all right, I didn't know.
And there is not a, an exact corollary in Rosenberg's rules. I think the idea though is that any council member who thinks that the process isn't working correctly should, can direct that because, because under Rosenberg's rules, which is similar to what's in our policy already, the mayor is the, essentially the parliamentarian and the person who makes sure that everything happens. So, you make an inquiry to the mayor and that's the.
So, if I was listening to the conversation of the council and I felt it was not, it was not on track of what we should be talking about, I should address the mayor, I don't have to use the point of order.
You don't, you don't have to say point of order. I think you can say, you know, "Mr. Mayor, I think we're off track."
Okay, but I, I guess kind of the follow-up question is, when I saw it used, it was just, they just kind of said it out loud. They didn't have to say, "Hey, hey, I got something to say," you know? They just said it. So, in our case, I would have to just say, raise my hand and say, "Mayor, I want to talk to you."
Well, I, that's, that's my recommend, and I misspoke. There is actually the very last little bit of Rosenberg's. It does say that you can request a point of order. I don't think, that's not in practice how we've done it. We've always been.
I've never seen it used here. But in the county, it was used a lot.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's never been how we've done it. It's usually been, because it's, it, the way, you know, if you're being very formal, you'd say, "Point of order." Mayor would say, "State your point." And you would say, "We're off track." I think it's easier to say, "Mayor, if I can interrupt, I think we're getting off track."
Good. I just, I just wanted to know how, if I ever thought this was going to happen, how to address it. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions, comments? Gino?
Thank you, Mayor. So, if you could pick up that little pieces of paper that you were reading from, Dawn, could you pick it up? Yeah, so is that the extent of Rosenberg's? Or is there like a, a, a small booklet that elaborates on some of those?
Are you asking where the other 250 pages are?
Yeah.
They don't exist, this is it.
I'm sorry?
This is, this is it.
In totality?
Go on.
Makes it simple.
Unabridged. Write it back to back.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Renee, did you have?
Yeah, the, again, also in that same document that you're holding, there's a page on courtesy and decorum, right? And that one is actually short and concise.
Yeah, and that's, that's intended to govern the members of the council. But, but it certainly.
And the members of the public.
Well, it's, it's, we only hold our council to these rules. We don't hold members of the public to this. We have an ethics policy as well. We hold each other to a higher standard than we do the public, for sure. I think these are nice objectives, but we wouldn't kick somebody out for violating one of these or even possibly interrupting them.
Yeah, that's right, you didn't say point of order. Get out. Okay. Christina, back to you.
Okay. So, that concludes that item on Rosenberg's Rules of Order. Sergio's going to come up and just put up our sustainable Morgan Hill. We can just talk about what's ahead. So, we will have our 2024, believe it or not, goal-setting workshop, first weekend in February. So, that date has been, was updated based on our new timing policy. And so, we will, our first point of order on that, on that, for that workshop will be to look at the sustainable Morgan Hill and this council will have to decide, hey, are these still our ongoing priorities? Are these still our strategic priorities? And so, as I mentioned at the beginning, these were laid out for 2022 and 2023. And so, I would just encourage all of you, Mayor and council members, to start thinking about and looking at this document to see, you know, what you might offer up in February as far as updating this document goes. I've had some conversations with members of the council and some items that are of interest to you. And so, you have time between now and February to start thinking about that. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you and thank you all for being here. I will say, there's a couple items I want to just, I know it's not on here as far as future agenda items, but I want to talk about a couple real briefly of what I would be looking to in the future. One of them, and Yvonne, you brought up the comments around the outdoor sports center. I would like to have a conversation about youth sports tourism and the opportunities that we have through the sports park and around sports and recreation tourism. I think we could do more to be focused on youth sports and recreation and elevating that as a little higher priority. It's one of our, it's one of our four pillars in our economic blueprint. And I would like to see us give that a little bit more of a priority as to what we can do around some of those fields and how we can begin to work on those and develop better tourism, not just there, but also at the aquatic center as well. And then at another, another item that I'll be looking to bring forward is around funding public art and some options to make that happen. So, that'll be something I bring forward at another time. Maybe the next council meeting I'll put it on for a future agenda item, just a heads up to you guys. Any other closing comments that anybody would like to make? Marilyn?
Just, I wanted to know schedule for October meetings?
Yes, so our next meeting is October the 4th. So, we're working on completing the agenda for that. So, that's Wednesday, October 4th. We will start at 5:00 and that will start out with a closed session. And then, we will not have meetings on the 18th or the 25th. And then our next meeting after that will be November the 1st.
Thank you.
Yvonne, do you have comments?
I wanted, I wanted to make some comments. I don't know that Matt's here anymore, so that's fine. But on the work plan for economic development. And then I, the one big thing I did want to discuss was, I would like for us to revisit the economic blueprint. And I think that we need to look at our tourism, which goes in line with what you just talked about, and make that more of a priority. You just talked about looking at the strategies as they come up and even, you know, reading through all of this and looking at what we're supporting and advancing as far as entitlements and permits. I think we need to kind of revisit that and make sure that our priorities are reflected here because it seems like, like we may have, we may need to change things up a bit. So, I'm hoping we can have a conversation on that. I also wanted to talk about murals on buildings, on some of the buildings that we have off of the 101. I would like to see if we could have some effort in working with those building owners, any future development as we see it's being built out and getting murals on those buildings so that it's not such an eyesore. We've had lots, I've had and I know others.
Yvonne, real quickly, I don't want to get too deep into details because that would be something that our LCAC is really going to be commissioned with as far as our public art is concerned. And part of that is, we're talking about a funding mechanism. We're having conversations around that. So, I would keep these comments that you're making very high level.
Okay, well, I'm trying to give some background so people understand why I'm talking about putting murals on buildings. Specifically, I'm interested in doing the buildings off of the 101 so that we can address some of the comments in the community and kind of help our businesses be more embraced by the community.
Very good.
And the last one was, I, well, I lost it there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I don't remember what it was.
Sorry about that. If there are no other comments then, we'll consider the meeting adjourned.